Good morning. We're going to go ahead and get started, and we will start with an invocation from Councilman McAtee, and then Councilman Greenwell will lead us into pledge.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as members of the team for Oklahoma City, give us wisdom and perception as we look to next year, and that the decisions that we made will be pleasing in your sight, not only benefit our citizens, but benefit those there, people around us, from other cities that may look to us for leadership. Thank you now, be with our mayor, and continue to bless him, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting of the city council to order. I should mention, we are joined up here by, is it deputy or assistant?
Assistant.
Assistant clerk, Miki Graham, and deputy municipal councillor Amanda Carpenter. And we are here today to, pretty much exclusively, talk about the fiscal year 20 proposed budget. There are no items under item three from the office of the mayor, so we'll go right to item four, which is presentations and discussion of FY '20 proposed budget. In our system of government, this budget conversation begins with a proposal from the city manager, which we physically have in front of us, with an eye towards the fiscal year that begins on July 1st. With that, I will turn it over to you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we'll have several presentations over the next few weeks that will come to you from the different departments today. We've got three departments. Doug and Russell Evans will be here. Doug will give us a budget overview. Russell will talk a little bit about the economy. He'd had some requests, just to get some update on the economy, and how that fits into what we're projecting in next year. So they'll give us that to begin with, and then we'll have police, public transportation, and fire today. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate, and I will again, all the work of all the city departments. We have, you know, we refer to it as a decentralized budget process, and that's really so that those that are out in the departments that are really experts in their fields, and experts in the services that we're provided, are the ones that make the proposals to us, and help us and guide us in the process. And so I really appreciate all the work, not just the department directors, but all the staff that works on this, that brings us together for us, and sets us forward with our financial plan for the next year. And so to start off, we'll have Doug Dowler get us going here, and then we'll hear from Russell Evans.
Good morning. Glad to be here in front of you. And I'd like to take a moment, I'd just like to ask the staff from the budget office to stand up. I'd like to recognize their hard work and dedication that helped get us to this point. I really appreciate all the work that they've put in, what they've done to help us get to this point. So thank you all very much, Sarah.
Thank you.
So if we take a look at the overall budget for the city, it's $1,554.2 million. And what we see when we look at the various categories is some very different growth rates between them. In the general fund, you'll see that's up 4.4% to $481.9 million. This is primarily due to growth in sales and use tax. Our other operating funds are up 3.1% at $249.7. And there's really a number of kind of ups and downs within the operating funds, and a number of those are related to specific departments. So as those departments present their budget presentations on their operations, you'll see some of the reasons for those changes. The other non-operating, or our non-operating funds are down significantly. You'll see that they're down about $50 million, 5.7%. And the primary reason there is a decline of $132 million in the MAPS III sales tax fund. This makes sense when you start to think about, we saved up money for a number of years for these projects, and now we're spending it down as these major projects are underway. And so that's the significant decline that you'll see in the non-operating funds there. We do have an increase on Better Streets, Safer City, in the sales and use tax, but again, it's not as high as the decline that occurred in MAPS III. When we look at our positions in the budget for this coming year, we have an increase of 65 positions. That's 1.4%. Gets us to 4,869 positions. And if we kind, to put that in context, each year during our budget workshop, one of the measures that we track is employees per 1,000 citizens. While we don't have an updated population number for FY '20, we've plugged in that proposed number of positions against last year's population, and gives us a 7.27 employees per 1,000 citizens. That's up about 1/10th from the current year, but you can see that's still below the levels that we were at in 14, 15, before the recession hit in Oklahoma, where we saw a significant decline in our revenues, and likewise, a decline in the number of employees. So when we look at the position changes, the police department had the largest increase in staffing with 15 additions. I'm not going to go into those, because Chief City's going to present his budget here in just a few minutes, but that was the department that added the most positions. Parks and Rec was second with 13 positions, positions for the I-240 softball complex, some changes in their rec center staffing, and then maintenance on the Oklahoma City Boulevard that they're going to be taking over this coming year. In public works, we added nine positions, six for pothole patching, two for improved citizen response and communication, and a position in drainage engineering. Utilities adds six positions. They really had a number of changes, and adds and deletes, but the net is an increase of six. They'll talk more about these, but the changes were really focused on improving customer service, restructuring staff at the water treatment plants, and expanding the commercial pre-treatment program. Fire adds five positions, and again, Chief Kelly will talk about those and the other changes in their budget. Development Services added five animal control positions to extend the hours of service and improve responsiveness. Within personnel, we've added a new position as diversity officer to develop and implement strategies to recruit and retain a workforce that better reflects the demographics of our community. The second position is a training technician to begin implementing a training program aimed primarily at supervisors. Within the city manager's office, we added two positions, a chief innovation officer and an action center representative. The chief innovation officer will work with departments to develop and encourage data-driven best practices, and foster a culture of innovation, efficiency, and process improvement. And the goal with the additional action center representative is to hire someone who is bilingual to help handle requests from Spanish-speaking residents. Some other significant changes in the FY '20 budget include adding Sunday streetcar service year-round, as well as holiday service on fixed route bus routes. The contract with Myriad Gardens Foundation to manage and operate the Scissor Tail Park is increased to include a full year of operations. We've also included funding for the pre-opening activities for the MAPS III convention center. We've added funding for the criminal justice task force. The last couple of years, that's been paid for out of contingency, but we're making the funding for that permanent. And finally, we also made permanent the contract increase with the homeless alliance. It will be funded at $300,000 next year. So as we look at kind of where the budget fits within our strategic planning process, it really is part of a full-year process. Each year, we conduct the citizen survey, which will be going out probably in the next month, month and a half, and use that to inform council priorities, which then, of course, departments focus their strategic business plans around those priorities, and that then leads into the budget development and the proposed budget that you have before you. And of course, throughout the year, we're collecting data, reporting, evaluating, and making decisions on how we're doing against our priorities and against the goals of each department. With that in mind, these are the seven council priorities that were adopted in the early, in early 2017, and they really guide the budget process. I'm not going to go through those, but I will remind you, as you go through the budget document, you will see these indicators in areas that do support the council priorities to indicate those areas. So as we take a look now, what really drives our budget, it's our revenues. So again, overall, we're looking at $1.55 billion as the budget. Of course, the largest recurring revenue source is taxes. They total 673 million, or 43% of our budget. Sales tax is the largest category, and it's over $468 million in total. And when we look at the total budget, taxes includes property taxes in the debt service fund, which total 95 million, and go to pay off our general obligation bonds. So fees and charges include things like franchise fees, building permits, ambulance membership fees, stormwater drainage fees, and they count for about 15% of the total. Transfers in come from public trusts that pay for the operating costs for water, wastewater, solid waste, and airports, about 3% of the total. Our other revenue includes things like interest, lease revenues, and other miscellaneous sources, and accounts for 2% of our revenue. Federal grants are about 2% of our budget. And then fund balance represents the second-largest revenue source this year at 35%, or $544 million. And of course, MAPS III represents the biggest piece of that, and it's $305 million. And because it's so large, we kind of broke that out to show you can see that separately. That's 20% of our total budget, is the budget for MAPS III for next year. When we kind of focus in a little bit more on the operating revenue, it's $731.6 million. Again, taxes, the largest category, at 61%, or $417 million, with sales tax, again, being the largest source in that category. Fees and charges account for about 30% of the operating budget. Transfers, again, from the trust to pay for water, airports, solid waste, about 30%. And then transfers, I'm sorry, and then other revenue is very small, 1%, and then fund balance accounts for the remaining 3%. As we look specifically at the general fund, our largest fund, you'll see the distribution is somewhat similar. Taxes make up about 70%. Sales tax being the biggest piece of that, 54%, 262 million. Use tax being the second-largest area of taxes, at about 13% of the other, in that other taxes category, $63.5 million. Franchise fees are 9% of our total. They come from utility companies that pay us for the use of our rights-of-way. Fines total $18.8 million, represent 4% of the general fund. Fees and charges, such as building permits, admin charges, wage adjustment from police and fire sales tax funds, make up 15% of the total. And then other, including transfers, interest, and some other miscellaneous revenues, make up about 2% of the total. So we'll turn now quickly to the expenditures, and using the categories that are outlined in the Municipal Budget Act, you can see that, again, overall, in our total budget, personal services is the largest category at 34%, followed by other services, which includes contracts, utilities, chargebacks at 26%. Capital outlet is the third-largest category at 25%. And again, we've kind of separated out MAPS III, again, just to show its significant size there. When we kind of, again, focus in a little bit more on our operating expenses, personnel becomes a bigger piece of this, 70.6%. And much of the capital gets excluded, because most of that's in our non-operating funds. So again, a very small piece of capital there. On the general fund, again, personal services, the largest, at 72%. Other services at 21%, includes utilities, contracts for service. Our payments to COTPA and chargebacks for internal service funds like IT, fleet, risk management, and print shop are part of other services. And supplies, capital, and transfers are fairly small, at about 7%. And I would like to point out there that we do make a contribution for capital out of the general fund, for about $6 million of capital, but it doesn't show up on this chart as capital, because we transfer that to the capital improvement projects fund. So it shows up as a transfer when we're categorizing it based on these categories of the Municipal Budget Act. As we look at the general fund based on the area of service, you can see public safety makes up the majority at 64%, that's police, fire, and courts. General government comes in at 8%. And that's really because all of general government functions are within the general fund. We don't have any dedicated funds that go towards general government. Public services, the second-largest category, 18%, that includes public works, development services, and planning. And finally, culture and recreation, the general fund is made up of the parks, recreation department, and the cost for operating the Cox Convention Center and the Chesapeake Energy Arena. That totals about 10% there. So when we develop the budget book, of course, we're following Oklahoma state law, the Municipal Budget Act, but we also use the Government Finance Officers Association best practices. They put together a program, this is the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, for communities that follow best practices, and they review books and make sure that we're following that. And again, this year, we received their Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and only three other municipalities in Oklahoma received that award. And this was our 31st year to receive the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from GFOA. So just briefly, just want to kind of take a little quick minute to kind of walk through what's in this, because it's a big volume, there's lots here. The introduction section provides a lot of good information on the city and our budget process. Our financial summary section provides an overview of all the funds, a good picture of our revenues and expenses, and also kind of what we're using to project our revenues and expenses, if you're interested in looking at more detail there. Our departmental budgets, the section, provides information on funding and positions in each department. And our second volume, that's this smaller one, that's the performance data, gives you performance data on every department, as well as the issues that they're facing, and the strategies and results that they're using to try to address those issues. The next section, section D, is the fund summary section, where we outline each separate fund within the budget, within the city. And this is the format that's required by state law. This is what will be adopted, is this one section here, the fund summary section. So when you all vote in June to adopt the budget, this is basically the piece that you will be voting on. But we feel like that doesn't give you enough information about what's really going on within departments, and that's why we include these other sections, just to give you some deeper understanding and information about what's going on in the departments. Section E is our capital budget, and gives an overview of the capital projects that are coming up in the current year. And then finally, our appendix gives some nice reference materials, and things like our financial policies, and our table of compliance that shows how we're doing against our financial policies in each of our funds, and as well as a glossary that helps with terms and things that may be unfamiliar to you. So today, we've got presentations from public transportation and parking, fire and police. Next week, there will actually be the introduction of the budget that will authorize advertising of the budget and set the public hearings. And then we'll have presentations again on May 14th and 28th from other departments. June 4th will be the final public hearing and budget adoption. And of course, the budget will take effect on July 1st. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions in terms of an overview of the budget.
Well, thank you, Doug. Yeah, I do have a few things I'd like to at least draw attention to, and then we can go around the horseshoe. You dropped a lot of important stuff on us there.
Yes.
So I think we might take a moment before we get to Russell. I'll start with, you know, the big picture. I think it's worth pointing out, if you go to, in our book, the tab B, financial summaries, that very first page, B1, well, I would draw everyone's attention to the fact that in FY '18, our total expenditures were just under $900 million. And then you would be somewhat confused when you see that the very next year, we adopt a budget that is $600 million more than what we spent in FY '18. Well, it, we authorize, this is essentially an authorization.
That's correct.
But the reality is, we keep carrying over things like our MAPS III fund balance, and now our Better Streets fund balance, and we don't always spend them. Obviously, eventually, we are going to, and this may be a big year for that. But I think it's worth noting, because I go around, just like everybody else, and I say, hey, the city's budget is $1.5 billion, because that's what it is.
Right.
But we actually will spend, at the end of the day, and we'll go, and you'll go back, and you'll turn it in from budget to actual, we'll spend hundreds of millions of dollars less than that.
That's correct.
It's really a budget authorization of $1.5 billion.
Yeah, and especially at something like the MAPS III projects, where we've got these significant-sized projects, we will encumber all the funds, say, for the convention center, or for the streetcar, that sort of stuff, so that they're reserved, and we know that they're going to be available. We may not spend all of that in one year, but we need to have the authorization to encumber those funds, to be prepared in case, so that we have them reserved, we know that they're going to be available.
And we're required by, we're required by state law in our budget to have the budget authorization to be able even do the encumbrances, even though like on, say, the convention center, we encumber that, but then it's over a couple of years that that money is spent.
Also, while I'm still on the big picture, let me mention your process that you laid out. I want to make sure everyone understands, especially our new members, that we don't, we don't have every department come and make a presentation.
Correct.
But of course, by request, we could. We could also, you could meet with them individually. It's just kind of, they kind of pick the ones that are the biggest, and that people have shown the most interest in in the past. I would also say, you laid out a calendar, and we have wiggle room there. I mean, this has been, this process here, in contrast to my experience at the state, has been so well-managed through the years, that it has fallen into a bit of a routine, and it works really well, and we don't end up delaying the vote to the next meeting or whatever. But we had that opportunity, and despite it being presented, you know, the way it is, as sort of fait accompli, I want everybody to understand here, this is our budget ultimately, and we have the, you know, the authority to modify it in any way we want. And it's really well-done, so we often don't make dramatic amendments to it. But I think it's worth reminding everybody on the elected official level that, you know, this isn't our city's budget until we adopt it. If I could also draw attention to, you talked about the positions you don't mention, because they really were already added in past years, the major increase in our police department.
Yes.
So I want people to understand that that's not mentioned here, because it was mentioned in past years.
Right.
But actually, those positions are still, and many of them still vacant, because we're still having to ramp up with police academies.
You're correct. That slide that showed the positions, I should have mentioned, FY '18 was when we added those positions, and you'll see a significant jump in the number of positions when those fire and police positions were added. And like you say, we're continuing to fund those positions, filling those positions, getting folks into those, and providing the service that's expected.
Yeah. So if anybody looks at this budget and says, well, I keep hearing the mayor and the council talking about adding police officers, but I'm not seeing it, well, that's because it was already done for budget purposes.
Right.
I want to also, there was a great slide, it had three really exciting developments on it, and you had several slides about personnel additions, but there was one slide that included the diversity position, the chief innovation officer, and a new action center employee. And the city manager and I have been talking about the diversity position since literally the moment when, on behalf of the council, I offered him this job. So I'm thrilled that that's in there, and I think that helps us recruit, and also give opportunities and enrichment to people within the organization, so that we continue to have diversity at all levels, all the way up to the senior level. And we also join a conversation, I mean, this is something that large corporations and entities did many years ago, and there's best practices and other things that we need to have, we need to have somebody waking up every morning, thinking about that, and being a part of that, of that conversation. So that's exciting. Also, the chief innovation officer. So there's another sort of municipal-level conversation that happens every day in this country about new things. And of course, it's our job, all of us, to be in tune with that, but at the same time, we get, we do get a little busy with just running things the way they have been run. And we need somebody also, I think, who's waking up every morning, looking at those new innovations, those smart city, all those buzzwords, and making sure that, picking and choosing what works for Oklahoma City, and bringing them to the city manager and the departments, and making sure that we're at the cutting edge, just like every other city.
Yeah, and I want to make sure too, that it's not, to add that position isn't to say that that isn't something that's going on within our departments every single day. It's to say that we're going to have someone else to be there to focus on this, and to help support our departments. Because I do think our departments work very hard at making sure, we're trying to stay up with best practices, knowing what's going on to the industry, but now you have someone else that will be focused on that, and be a support for our departments.
Yeah. And then finally, on this slide, the action center representative, folks in our action center do an amazing job, and they could always use more bodies down there to take those calls and follow up. So I think that's one thing on here that a lot of citizens will see. That's certainly a frontline position. So I just wanted to draw attention to a few of those things, and clarify a few things too, if you're not immersed in the Oklahoma City budget process. So with that, before we get to Russell, I didn't know if anybody wanted to talk to Doug. Yes, David.
Doug, could we go back to your very first slide?
Okay.
Yeah, that one. So the other operating funds, can you explain that again, comparing that to the general fund?
So other operating funds have dedicated sources of revenue, but they support operations. So for example, our E-911 center, there's a tax that comes in on phone bills that supports E-911. We can't put that money into the general fund, it has to be used for 911.
Okay.
So that's an example of an operating fund that has a separate source of revenue. Likewise, the trust that support water, wastewater, solid waste operations, those revenues are dedicated to that purpose, come in from the trust. Airports is another one, stormwater drainage, those are the significant funds that are other operating funds.
Okay. Well then, moving back to the general fund, in my mind, a 4.4% increase is rather substantial. We haven't seen that kind of an increase in our general fund in quite a few years.
Right. Yeah, and what I, what I would point to is, within our financial summaries, you can see the revenue detail, and you can kind of go through, and I didn't want to get into this level of detail, but you can kind of see in detail, what are the revenue sources that we show growing significantly. So for example, our sales tax, we have growing at 2% as our base rate of growth. If you add in the TIF districts for the First National and the Omni Hotel, it grows to about 2.4%, but 2% is our base growth there. Likewise, on use tax, that one's been growing significantly faster because of some of the online changes that are coming, and we have that one growing at 5%. And so that is an area that's growing faster than our other areas, but those are our two dollar-wise biggest areas of growth. We've got some other revenue sources we can kind of go through and look at those line by line. Most of the revenue sources are not growing at 4%. It's that use tax really helps pull things up for us.
Right. So if we were to speak in terms of, like, the national economy, Russell, we don't normally see growths of 4%, you know, to reach.
And I think the other factor too, as Doug had mentioned, the online sales tax.
Yeah.
That is a change in remittance methodologies. It's not a reflection of growth in the economy.
Correct. No, no, and that's what I'm leading towards.
Yes.
There have been some changes over the years, so we shouldn't necessarily continue to expect growths of over 4% in our budget moving forward.
Right.
This is somewhat of a unique year, but everyone, not just the members of the council and the employees of the city, but everyone in Oklahoma City should recognize, this is a significant increase in the overall operating budget of the city, at a size that I doubt that you would see very many other cities being able to match.
Right.
So, thank you.
Anybody else for Doug?
I just, I wanted to point out, I'm excited to see the five-staff position change in animal control.
Yes.
Not something real exciting to talk about, but it could have a big impact. Hopefully, their field personnel.
Yes.
Help us take care of some issues out there. So, thanks.
Todd, I want you to know, when that was first shown to me, I said to the city manager, well, Councilman Stone's really going to like that.
All right, very good.
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
So now we'll have Russell Evans. Councilman Greenwell will ask about this, if we couldn't just get an update on where we are and how this, you know, where we are in the economy, what we see coming towards us, a lot of uncertainty within the economy nationally, and within the state. And so Russell will just help give us an update here. They haven't done their mid-year update, and so we'll probably have him back again towards the end of the summer, when they do their mid-year update on their economic forecast, but he can just give us an update on what they're seeing now, and then how that translates into what we projected in our budget.
Yeah, I'm grateful to take a few minutes. So Doug sent over late last week, three questions, so broadly speaking, the three questions had to do with household savings rates in Oklahoma City, access to benefits in the labor market in Oklahoma City, and sort of some context for Oklahoma City's population and economic growth relative to some other regional cities. And so what we did is, we tried to collect some information on this. These are kind of very interesting questions, bigger picture questions, long-run questions, but hopefully shed a little bit of light here on what's going on in the city. Let's see. So the first question that came up had to do with household savings rates. And so the question talked about this, kind of this idea of having $400 or less in a savings account to address an emergency. The source of, the exact source of this, I'm not sure of, but I suspect it's the Federal Reserve's survey on household economics and decision-making, I think is what SHED stands for. So the Federal Reserve Board conducts a survey every November and December, and then releases the results of that every May, and they ask a household's questions on their personal economics and decision-making. And so we would expect an update to this particular survey here in just a few weeks. I think it usually comes out mid-May. And that question, one of the questions in that survey is, could you easily cover an unexpected expense of $400 using cash or cash equivalent? Cash equivalent would be, so cash would be cash on hand, cash equivalent would be something in my checking or savings account. Cash equivalent would also be, could I pay it off on a credit card, and then make my credit card payment the following month? And so the way the Federal Reserve Board frames this question is, could you cover $400 easily? In the last survey, 60% of the respondents said yes, and 40% said no, I could not cover a $400 unexpected expense easily. This survey's about 20,000 individuals, it's an online, I'm sorry, 12,000 individuals in an online survey, and valuable information, but the question of, could you easily cover is a bit of a tricky question. There's some subjectivity there, as people decide for themselves what constitutes easily. And so we think about that, you know, that question, that's an improvement. I think when they first did the survey four or five years ago, it was right at 50/50. 50% said I could easily cover it, 50% said no. And so to get to 60% yes, 40% no, is kind of an improving trend, but still, obviously, a challenge for many households. I think what, the information I brought comes from a difference, a similar survey, but different. It's from the FDIC National Survey on Unbanked and Underbanked Households. This survey goes out every June, excuse me, every other June, every odd-year June, and it's a supplement to the Bureau of Labor Statistics and the Census's current population statistics. Census's current population statistics survey that's used to calculate unemployment rates. And so we get the unemployment rates calculated monthly. There's typically about 60,000 or 61,000 households involved in that survey. In any given month, about 51,000 or 52,000 of the 61,000 respond. And we use that to report on unemployment rates. In last June 2017, about 38,000 households participated in this FDIC survey. And so I think this is a survey that makes it a little easier to make city-to-city comparisons. So I'll show you some of the responses from that survey and kind of how Oklahoma City stands relative to some other regional cities. So the first question that would stand out is unbanked, underbanked, and not banked, or fully banked, I guess. Underbanked is the important one here. Underbanked are households that have a checking or savings account, but they're still using some alternative financial service. And so we'll look a little closer at those alternative financial services. But you see, Oklahoma City has a fairly high rank of underbanked households. So in comparison to these other subjectively selected cities, Oklahoma City's pretty high, at about 25% of households using some form of alternative financial services. These alternative financial services can be transactions or credit services. Transaction services are when I'm using a non-bank to get a money order, cash a check, provided international remittance. I think the more important one for a conversation, if you're really interested in sort of household savings and how well-positioned are Oklahoma City households, is the alternative financial services credit use. So the credit use would be the percent of households that are reporting that they're making use of a payday loan, refund anticipation loan, a rent-to-own service, a pawn shop loan, or an auto title loan. And you notice on the credit column there that Oklahoma City has the highest rate of these, again, sort of subjectively selected peer cities, the highest rate of alternative financial services credit use, right? So 11% of Oklahoma, it's estimated that 11% of Oklahoma City households are using, have used in the last 12 months, a payday loan, a refund anticipation loan, a rent-to-own, a pawn shop loan, or an auto title loan. So again, the question is, have you used any of these services in the last 12 months? Another question that gets asked in this survey that gets directly at savings is, did you set money aside any time in the last 12 months to be used for an unexpected expense or an emergency, even if that fund was later spent? And so the question is not, do you have money set aside? The question is, did you set aside money, even if you spent that money on an unexpected expense and it's not there anymore, did you set it aside? And when you ask the question this way to respondents and estimate for Oklahoma City, Oklahoma City's about a 70% affirmative rate that households are setting aside money for unexpected expenses or emergencies, which is actually on the higher end of these peer cities. And so we sort of have, you know, some, excuse me, maybe not necessarily conflicting data points, but you have this idea that Oklahoma City households are making pretty high use of alternative financial services to get payday loans, refund anticipation loans to survive or to cover an expense, but also setting aside money. So maybe that they're just setting aside and using it at a higher rate in Oklahoma City. But that kind of gets at that question. I think another question on the survey has to do with use of credit. Again, I'll make all this information available to Doug. And so if there's any follow-up questions, I'll do a data dump this afternoon onto Doug's desk. But I think the only one that stands out here is, that I thought was particularly interesting, was the much higher estimated rate in Oklahoma City of, in terms of traditional uses of banking credit, was that was use of mortgages, and this would include home equity loans and home equity lines of credit. And so in Oklahoma City, it's estimated that's almost 45% of Oklahoma City households that are making use of a primary mortgage or a home equity loan or home equity line of credit, which is a much higher rate than kind of those comparison cities that you see. Again, I would love it if I had a commentary and interpretation of this data, but I don't. I'm just providing some of the information that was asked. And then this last one here was sort of, did you apply for credit or personal loan in the last 12 months? Again, you can see Oklahoma City is fairly high on applications for credit in the last 12 months. This is, again, this information is based on the June 2017 survey. This will go back out in June 2019. So the survey will be re-administered here in just a few months. But the most recent observation is from June 2017. Might have something to do with economic conditions that we were facing in Oklahoma at that time. And then you can see, kind of felt discouraged or denied credit. And again, the one that stands out here for Oklahoma City is the last column is falling behind on bills. So Oklahoma City has the highest rate, except for Wichita, of those other cities in terms of individuals reporting that they fell behind on their bills in the last 12 months. So again, these are June 2017, answers to June 2017 questions. This survey will go out again in June 2019 when we estimate national and regional unemployment rates. This will go out as a supplement to that survey. We'll ask people about their banking use, their savings activities, and their ability to handle unexpected expenses. So the second broad question that came up was access to benefits in Oklahoma City. Now, on this one, we sort of ran out of time as we worked over the weekend. And by work, I mean attended my daughter's soccer tournaments. And so we got as much done as we could over the weekend. But here's what I'll just, you know, this is something that we can look at in our mid-year update, that I think is a very interesting question. So these are national numbers. At the U.S. level, this reports access to some of these benefits for private companies based on the size of the company. And so what you would expect to see is that for small companies that have 199 employees, for example, they report that 55% of small private businesses, 199 employees, offer medical benefits. 83% of medium-sized companies, 100 to 499 employees. 88% of large, 500 or more employees, offer access to medical care. And then you can see that same, you know, that same sort of rate for paid sick leave, paid vacation, paid holidays. And so a back of the envelope calculation that, again, we just didn't have time to do, would be to go into Oklahoma City and pull the Oklahoma City establishments and look at how many of our employees are working at an establishment of 199 individuals, how many from 104 to 499, how many 500 or more. And so we could look at the breakdown of Oklahoma City employment by establishment size, apply these same ratios, and have some idea of what this means for Oklahoma City. And we just ran out of time. What's not included in this slide is that you have higher rates on all of these benefits in the public sector. And so, holding establishment size constant, a public sector, small entity establishment is more likely to offer medical care, paid sick leave, paid. And so this is important for Oklahoma City because it's still the case that about 20%, just under 1 in 5 jobs in Oklahoma City MSA is a public sector job, owing to the fact that, you know, state capital and city and county and local jobs. And so you'd have that, I would expect, again, I'm guessing here, but I would expect that we would see a sort of a slightly higher rate of access to benefits in Oklahoma City than you might expect because we have so many jobs in that public sector. So here's the question that, for me, is kind of the most interesting in my last few slides, kind of putting Oklahoma City's population and economic growth in context. I love the screenshot because this is something that we've been saying now for six or seven or eight years, that people and economic activity are moving from northeast, southwest. And so when I saw this just the other day on the Census website, this new report that counties in the South and West lead the nation in population growth, right, this was affirming, this is a conversation we've been having in Oklahoma City for some time. When you look at Oklahoma City, what we've been talking about in our shop for, again, for years, is this I-35 corridor. And so this is 2010 to 2018. You might have seen a very similar graphic in the newspaper recently, looking at the fastest and slowest-growing counties by population growth in Oklahoma. And not surprisingly, the fastest-growing counties are along this I-35 corridor. The fastest ones are really like, I think it's Canadian, McLean and Logan are right up there, are some of the fastest-growing counties in terms of population growth rates. Oklahoma County, Cleveland County, very strong. I think that's Marshall, Love, and Bryan along the Texas border there in the southern part of the state. And then you have Tulsa County. And then depending on how you calculate, the graphic in the newspaper had Wagner County as number 10. I think we have Payne County number 10, using a slightly, slightly different baseline year for comparison. But the pattern is still the same. In Oklahoma right now and across the nation, urbanization is happening. It's happening slowly but persistently. Oklahoma is less urbanized than the nation. And so Oklahoma is catching up in terms of urbanization. And as we urbanize, the population growth rates are strongest along this I-35 corridor. As we said in the budget workshop, and as we've been telling our audiences here in the last several months, as you look, I know you're looking a few months down the road right now, as you think about a fiscal year 2020 budget, but as you look 10 or 12 or 15 years down the road, what this means is that Oklahoma, 15, 20 years now, is likely more urbanized than we are right now. It means Oklahoma City is a much larger city than Tulsa. And so where those two MSAs are split by about 300,000 or 400,000 individuals right now, by the time you get 10 or 12 years down the road, that split's going to be closer to 800,000 or 900,000 individuals. And so we expect that pattern of urbanization to create a sort of a three-tier system in Oklahoma, where you have Oklahoma City, a city of one size, Tulsa, a city of a smaller size, and then the rest of the state. I didn't bring it, but I found an interesting publication from 20 years ago, trying to forecast county population growth from 2000 to 2020, out of the University of Pennsylvania Wharton School. And the forecast for Oklahoma City MSA for that 2020, and that forecast was just right at 1.2 million people. And we're at about 1.4, a little over 1.4 right now. And so if you went back 20 years ago and you looked at forecasting Oklahoma City population, Oklahoma City MSA population, you really would have underforecasted that population growth because those trends of moving to the north, from the northeast to the southwest, were sort of just materializing it. Exactly how strong they were, I think, were underappreciated at the time. So let me put this in context a little bit. Here's, I think, one of the things that's interesting to think about MSA to MSA population. So these are people moving from urban areas to urban areas. When you look at the fastest-growing urban areas, top 50, like the 50 biggest metropolitan areas in the United States, the, in absolute terms, the greatest net in-migration, you see Phoenix there at number one, you see at five Orlando, and eight Tampa. Again, this is the conversation that we've been having with the city council for six or seven years about these movements to the South and the West and the population gains, number one in Florida, number two in Arizona, number three on the I-35 corridor. And so this is the conversation we've been having. You still see this in the MSA to MSA net migrations. It's from 2012 to 2016. And so what we do is we track people moving to geography A from an outside MSA geography. For reference, there you can see Oklahoma City would be number 20 on that list. And so it would be number 20 out of the 50 in terms of, it's a net gainer with 8,278. And of that, of that 8,278, almost all of that is MSA to MSA in-migration in Oklahoma City. So it's a net gainer in terms of people migrating from urban area to urban area. So if we look in terms of absolute scale, or in terms of relative scale, this would be relative to your 2012 population. So what was your MSA in-migration relative to your 2012 population? Again, Austin is number one on that list. So MSA to MSA in-migration over those four years was equal to 1.6% of their starting 2012 population. San Antonio there is number 10. And so, and if you look at the I-35 corridor, Oklahoma City would be 12, Houston 15, and Dallas 20. And so this movement towards the I-35 corridor, you can see reflected in this data of moving from metro area to metro area. Metro areas that are losing to other metro areas, again, you see the bottom there, New York, Chicago, Detroit, Cleveland, St. Louis. Again, this broad conversation of movement, slow but persistent movements from northeast to southwest is still true, and we're seeing that in the data. And maybe I'll just, on the population, I'll just, you know, sort of make, I'll save population comments in case certain needed. But so this is just a simple economic performance index. And so here we take employment, wages, business formation, and the size of your labor force. And we take these four characteristics of your economy, and we drop them into a single index. We give less weight to more volatile series, more weight to less volatile series. But so we take these peer cities and we drop them in. You can see the significant differences in economic performance over these 17 years. And they really divide into two groups. Here's your slow-growing group. Your slow-growing group is going to be Albuquerque, Amarillo, Fort Smith, Kansas City, Tulsa, and Wichita. That's Fort Smith on the bottom there. And so if you take away the influence of geography, so you no longer have this South and West geographical influence, you're not on the I-35 corridor. If you take away all of those factors, you take away access to like a strong defining industry like the energy industry. And Fort Smith, if you look at their employment, wages, labor force, number of businesses, they're basically where they were at in 2001. Okay? And so not a lot of change in the last 17 years. And you can see, not only there not a lot of change, but you can see how impacted they were by fluctuating national conditions. So as you go into the recession 2008, '09, and '10, you can see these cities are really responsive to those conditions. The top of this list is Amarillo. Just below Amarillo is Kansas City and Tulsa. And so Kansas City and Tulsa are kind of right there on that top, about 20% higher in terms of their overall economic performance relative to where they were in 2001. Again, last time, employment, wages, number of business establishments, and the size of your labor force. Your fast-growth cities are Austin, Dallas, Oklahoma City, and San Antonio. And Oklahoma City is at the bottom of that fast-growth list. And so, again, several years ago, we made a comment in a budget workshop that, you know, that my colleague has taken the call on Oklahoma City, the slowest-growing city in Texas. Okay? And so this is like, this is what we're talking about, right? So when you look at where Oklahoma City, what their economic trajectory looks at compared to other I-35 cities, Oklahoma City looks like the slowest-growing member of the fast group, rather than the fastest-growing member of the slow group, right? So now Tulsa and Kansas City look like they're the fastest of that slow group. Oklahoma City now looks like it's the slowest of this top group. And you can see it's sort of tracking it out. Now, what you can also see is, just in the last few years, we're not as, we're not big enough in absolute terms relative to Austin, Dallas, and San Antonio to absorb something like a collapse in the energy prices and energy price weakness. And so if you look closely at those last two observations, going back to 2015, you can see Oklahoma City there, it was trending a little above in terms of its growth rates to Dallas, right? Oklahoma City takes that little turn there in 2016 and '17. The rest of the data series kind of march on up. You can also see that these cities are a little less influenced by national conditions. Geography is a little bit of a barrier, right? It's not, there's still the turns there, right? It doesn't say that you're immune to U.S. recessions. It just says your geography helps you withstand it a little better if you're in Austin or in Oklahoma City, or a Dallas or San Antonio than if you're a Wichita or a Fort Smith or an Albuquerque. And so you can sort of, it kind of puts Oklahoma City in context. I will emphasize, again, the nature of compound growth. And so the same thing that's true, we say, well, if Oklahoma City grows at 1.3% a year and Tulsa at 0.8% a year, that sounds the same, but it's really not because the nature of compound growth is Oklahoma City is growing faster off of a larger base, and so the gap is widening. The same's going to be true of Dallas and Oklahoma City. And so it looks like very similar trajectories, but where Dallas is able to sustain slightly higher population growth rates into the metro area than Oklahoma City, that means the gap between Dallas and Oklahoma City is also widening. So again, for what it's worth, as you look 20 years down the road, this is what we would expect to see. We would expect to see widening gaps between some of these MSA areas and widening gaps between MSA areas and rural areas. So let me, this is my last slide. So all of that was to address the three specific questions that came from council, and we'll keep working on that access to benefits question and see if we can provide a better answer going forward. Let me make just a few comments on the very short-run outlook. So, you know, if you cut through everything that I said at the budget workshop about the outlook for the economy and your sales tax outlook, it would basically come down to an answer of, "I don't know." And I can report to you that in the last few months, we progressed from "I don't know" to "your guess is as good as mine." And Doug points out that these are very subtle economic differences, right? So it's important that you appreciate the difference between "I don't know" and "your guess is as good as mine." But the data is still very confusing. So it's not quite that bad, but just as a couple of examples, when we think about the two U.S. levers that we always talk about, right? So I say, well, if I knew what was happening in the U.S. economy and I knew what's happening with the oil and gas industry, I could make a pretty good prediction on what's happening in Oklahoma City. So I've got to kind of establish those two levers first. U.S. economic strength and energy industry, of the two, I would bet that sustaining higher-than-expected oil prices deeper into 2019 is more likely than sustaining stronger-than-expected U.S. economic growth. So if I was making a prediction right now, I would say the surprising strength we've seen in oil prices is more likely to continue than the surprising strength we've seen in U.S. economic conditions. When you look at the first quarter U.S. growth number of 3.2%, about half of that is an unexpected shrinking, oversize shrinking of the trade deficit, and the other half of that is an unexpected accumulation of inventory. And so when businesses manufacture products that they don't sell, our GDP accounting forces them to purchase their own production. And so everything that I produce gets sold into the economy at the moment that it's produced. So if I make a car but don't sell a car, GDP accounting makes me buy that car, and it goes into my inventory and gets registered at the point of production. And so as you can imagine, as inventories accumulate, we would expect in the future that production would slow down as firms sell those, sell that inventory that they've accumulated. And so you look at the last couple of quarters of inventory accumulation, you look at the trade deficit, and we would trade deficit, and we would expect US conditions to soften a little bit as we go through 2019. But then at the same time, you might have seen President Trump proposing to end sanctions on imports of Iranian oil. And so this will discourage countries from importing and supporting Iranian crude oil production, should take some Iranian crude oil off the market. You're aware of the struggles in Venezuela, Libya as well, struggling to consistently produce crude oil. And then right now, OPEC and Russia are holding to their conversations about supply cuts and moderating production. And so you sort of take all of this in, and you might expect that in 2019, a chance we get higher than, we get stronger oil prices than we would have expected. Now unfortunately, as yet, that is not translating into more local activity. Rig activity is still down, so the next bullpoint, you get these confusing, airport activity seems to be holding up very well, rig activity and energy employment less so. Employment growth is slower than forecasted. And so if I just look at the forecast I presented in the budget workshop and I said, where did I think employment was going to be in March and April and where, what's the number actually say? The numbers are below the forecast right now. So the employment, the growth in Oklahoma City, slower than the forecast had predicted, but average weekly earnings are like at all-time highs. And so we think about these correlations. We say, well, your sales tax collections seem to have some correlation to airport activity and rig activity and employment and earnings, and we can sort of use that correlations to make some predictions. But right now, those, those things aren't even correlated with each other anymore. And so it's really kind of a confusing time. At the budget workshop, we presented a range of 1.3% to 3.1% growth, which again, wide confidence interval is the economist's way of saying, I don't know. And so the wide confidence interval, and I'm still fairly concerned or pessimistic. So my interpretation of current data is, can tell me to still stay away from that upper range. I think Doug talked about staying away from that upper range and trying to establish baseline growth of 2% for this budget, which I think is prudent. I think I would stay away from that upper range as well. And I do expect as we get into later this summer to early fall, we will see economic conditions moderate just a little bit. And so what we'll be watching for is do those moderating conditions, what impact do they have on your sales tax, use tax performance versus if oil prices can stay higher, move unexpectedly higher, do we get some resurgence in drilling activity and production activity in the second half of the year that counters that a little bit? And so we're kind of watching that, a lot of confusing data right now, but hopefully we have better answers for you by June or July. So I appreciate those questions. I'd be happy to take a couple of questions or listen for a minute.
You talked about GDP growth of 3.2%, and you attributed that to shrinkage in the trade deficit, which I was really kind of shocked to hear you say that. What do you mean by that?
So, so what we're still seeing is, is sort of expedited trade activity that's trying to get in before the full weight and effect of trade or tariff barriers or trade restrictions take effect. And so we've seen this for several quarters now where you have companies that are looking ahead and saying, well, activity that I might normally do later in the year or early 2020, I want to get that done right now because it might be harder to do and not easier to do. And so you're actually seeing the trade deficit shrink a little bit. But if the trade restrictions wear on, you would see it kind of move in the opposite direction. So it's kind of moving activity around in time more than it is like creating legitimately new activity. Excuse me.
I cannot thank you enough for providing this data. I was one of the ones who asked about the savings. I had a feeling that it was the numbers you just said. But before I go into that, could you, last week, city manager, you mentioned the possibility of recession. Could you speak to, just basing, do you need water, by the way?
No, I'm just, it's allergies and chronic cold, and I apologize for, the microphone's right here.
No, it's fine. I didn't even, I didn't have allergies until I was in grad school in Stillwater, and then all of a sudden, I have allergies. I don't know. So I feel you.
It will go away in four or five months.
Good luck. What, could you speak to what could make a recession a possibility before I go into my second?
Sure. So I think the, when you look at like the National Association for Business Economics, blue-chip consensus forecasts, you look at Moody's Analytics, you look at all these shops that forecast US economic activity, and I think the consensus right now is that economic activity in 2019 won't be as strong as it was in 2018, even though we got such a good first-quarter number. So I think everybody's kind of expecting US economic conditions to slow down just a bit. But increasingly, the probability of a 2019 recession is going down. But there is still, if you look at these professional forecasters, they're still saying they think there's an elevated risk of a US recession sometime before the middle of 2021. And so if you sort of, you ask them over the next eight quarters or 10 quarters or so, what do you, you know, what's your, what's your assessment of a recessionary risk? And so I think the recessionary risks in the short term have come down, but I think they're still there as you look, as you look a little farther out in time. I will forward this article on, I'll make a note to forward this onto Doug, but Deutsche Bank chief economist just released a report yesterday or day before talking about what he viewed as the five things that would most likely trigger the next recession. And, you know, tops on that list would be, you know, collapse in consumer confidence. And so it sort of becomes, in macroeconomics, you know, consumer confidence is a bit self-fulfilling. So if I believe that the economy is moving into a weak patch, and I start behaving ahead of time for that weak patch, I start saving more, spending less, I'm less likely to invest in my company, I'm less likely to hire new workers because I think weakness is coming, then my behavior makes the very thing that I think coming, come to pass. It's, it becomes self-fulfilling. And so I think, you know, top on that list would be a fall in consumer confidence. Number two on that list would be a misstep at the Federal Reserve. And so as we watch monetary policy, Federal Reserve has gone from, in just a few months, they've gone from talking about trying to actively slow the economy down to trying to be neutral, to trying to put everything on pause, to conversations about trying to put some acceleration back into the economy. President Trump's economic advisor, Larry Kudlow, is still calling on the Federal Reserve to cut interest rates. We're looking very closely at how a change in the Federal Reserve Board of Governors affects policy. And so there's seven members on that Board of Governors, and they're supposed to serve staggered 14-year terms, but they never do. And so the idea is I have seven, seven members on my Board of Governors, and any one president over two terms could only appoint as many as four. But in this case, President Trump could appoint as many as five in his first term, just because there's vacancies and retirements and people moving on. And so we're not really sure, that's not a commentary on the administration, it's just a commentary on, we're just not sure what the philosophy of the Monetary Policy Setting Committee will be because there's, there's a fair amount of new influences, new voices, and potential for more new voices on that, on that committee. So those are probably the top two. But I'll forward the article on to share, it was kind of a nice little commentary on these five things that could be the next recessionary trigger.
I'd appreciate that. And then secondly, you know, local media made much of the election of us young folk to this council, and I think the reason why voters in War II were excited to have a young voice was because of these numbers that you just gave us. You know, the high student loan debt that we're facing, you know, I mentioned Stillwater earlier. Well, the recession hit when I was in graduate school, and it really changed fundamentally for me and my peers what our options are. You know, I have student loan debt over $100,000, and that was with Pell Grants, that was with working full-time, that was with going to school full-time. And that was most of my friends in school. We weren't just laying around on Snapchat. That's not true. That's the stereotype of us, but that's not true. And it changed our ability to even think about owning a home. And so most of us are renters, and I'm sure you all saw the Journal Record article recently, Kathy O'Connor, talking about the housing cost being low. But if you were to remove the, I just read this last night in an email from her, if we were to remove the coastal cities from the equation, Oklahoma City would have one of the highest rising rental costs in the country. And I've been feeling that for the last several years. I have friends who lived in Jefferson Park who had a one-bedroom apartment that once upon a time was like 650, went up to 775. Well, when you're working as a barista, or a server, or a bartender, or in the retail industry, that, that becomes an impossible rent to pay, impossible. And then you put the student loans on top of that, and then all of a sudden, these other numbers start making a lot more sense to me, too, the people who don't have banking accounts and then have to turn to payday loans or to credit cards. And then when we don't have a reliable public transportation system, and we've been working, Denberg is doing wonderful work squeezing the last drop of blood from the onion to get what we've got. But when the city is as spread out as it is, and you got to get to employment, you have to have a car. And that's this high 37.1% I'm looking at with this. And then you're not just talking about getting the home, or the car loan, you're also then talking about the gas and the maintenance of that car. So I think the voters, all that to say, when they put people who were under the age of 40 on this council to join the wisdom and experience that's already here, they wanted us to be thinking about, as you said, that 10, 12 years out and that growth that's coming. So I cannot thank you enough for putting context to what I already felt in my heart to be true and what I had already been experiencing out there. But we have got to be thinking about the rental class in this city and what kind of housing is going to be available for them as we move forward in terms of affordable workforce housing, low-income housing. And we've also got to be thinking about reliable public transportation connecting them to their workforce because this, this weight that is on my generation, on our shoulders right now, we are, we did everything that people asked us to do, work hard, go to school, go to college, and now we have all this debt. And it's an anxiety that I can barely put into words. I'm even having trouble putting into words right now. So I cannot thank you enough for giving me the words to help articulate the experience of the millennial generation right now. And that's what I would like us to think about as we go into this budget and as we go into maps. Thank you.
Anything else for Russell?
Yes, Russell. So you know your slide that showed the growth of the economy in San Antonio?
Oh, going the wrong way. This one?
Yes, yes. Are there factors such as industries that currently exist in San Antonio, maybe those that support the military industry just because there's so many military bases in San Antonio? Or would you attribute it to the location in terms of its I-35? How significant is that I-35 corridor in your opinion?
Yeah, so again, you know, we've been on this conversation for, I was talking to my colleague Kyle Dean just, just the other day, and this came out of a, we were contracted by the city of Fort Worth to look at the economic relationship between Fort Worth and Oklahoma City in 2008 or '09. And we kind of stumbled on this I-35 corridor as we were doing that research, and it's sort of been part of our conversation since. I think Kyle was probably the first one to, to really kind of bring this to a local conversation. As we've followed it since then, I think, you know, I'm a pretty big believer in the forces of economic geography. And so the way I always explain it is you have these short-run forces, which are your industry and what's happening in the economy, and you have the long-run forces, which is geography. And if you can marry short-run strength and long-run strength, that's when you get these like terrific economic boom periods, right? So for Oklahoma City, if we marry like strong energy sector activity with this I-35 corridor, that's when we get these really strong economic years. And when we have these years where the energy industry's not there, we sort of just get the influence of geography. So I'm, I'm a believer that geography is important, but there's no doubt in places like San Antonio that it would be the combination of geography is providing some consistent long-run, right, tailwinds to help your economy, but then you're, you know, you do have a strong financial services sector, you have a strong military sector, military support sector. And so you have some industry sectors there that are stable, that don't fluctuate as significantly with economic conditions as other industries do, they're not commodity-driven the way an energy or an ag industry is. And so I would think it would have to be a combination of those two, both of those influences.
But on the other hand, Kansas City is also along the I-35 corridor. Is it a matter of the further north, the further away you get from the south and southwest area?
That's exactly right.
Well, okay, final question then on this particular issue. Is there a distinction between being in the state of Texas and being in the state of Oklahoma in terms of economic growth?
Yeah, so we have, we have, this question just came up again in our internal conversations around our faculty and our shop just in the last few months, thinking about now, could you really tease out? So we have tried to tease this out in the past, trying to look at border counties in Oklahoma. There's some research out of Oklahoma State University, an economist named Dan Rickman looked at this four or five years ago, trying to tease out the influence of your, like, the state to which you belong, right? How important is that? To really try to get at the question then of if the state in which you belong is important, is that because of fiscal considerations, is that because of your tax, your tax differences or your policies or your? And so I don't know that I have a great answer for that. I do know that if you were, you know, where we wouldn't joke and say Oklahoma City is the slowest-growing city in Texas, Texas wouldn't acknowledge the I-35 corridor at all, right? So I still say Texas would just talk about the Texas triangle. They would just say, well, it's just Houston, Austin, San Antonio, and Dallas. We're the Texas, this is the growth, and they wouldn't acknowledge Oklahoma City as belonging to the corridor, certainly wouldn't acknowledge Wichita or Kansas City as belonging to the same geographic region. I think we're trying to make the argument that Oklahoma City does belong in this distinct geographic region. But, but the question of how, how important is your local fiscal policy mix than your state, I don't, I don't know.
Well, we've not received the same kind of spillover from the Dallas metro area that you might see in Southern California spilling over into Phoenix, Arizona, for example.
That's an interesting question. I'll look at that. That's a, that's an interesting observation.
Okay, final point. You know, your survey that was taken in the summer of '17?
Yes, the FDIC survey.
Yes. I suspect you'll have a difference, a higher, more confidence type of results in the summer of '19, given if it's, especially if we limit it to the state of Oklahoma in terms of confidence, the future, things like that. It's, we were still pulling ourselves out of a significant slowdown.
Yeah, and I think that, so we'll, that survey will be conducted in June. I think it gets released in like November, so there's, there's a few months left, so maybe the end of this year, but we can look at those numbers. And then I didn't include, but they, they started conducting that survey in 2013. So this was the third of three surveys, and I didn't really look all that closely at, at how Oklahomans responded in 2013 and 2015. But again, I'll make that data dump to Doug if you're interested.
Yeah, thank you. Final question then.
Wait, you said that already, Dave.
Well, this is the final question. So you know the, how high we have debt related to mortgages? Do we have a higher incidence of homeownership versus other communities?
So we have, I don't know that, I don't know that, that answer relative to other communities. I think you're talking about, you know, this idea that 45% of respondents indicated they did have either a mortgage or a mortgage or a home equity loan or a home equity loan. So about 45% indicated that they, that they did have one of those credit vehicles. I will say, you know, to councilman's comments just a second ago, we talked in the budget workshop about Oklahoma City having one of the highest rates of non-owner occupied mortgage, mortgage rates in the nation. This idea of looking, you talk about rental rates, right? Rental housing developing Oklahoma City, upward pressure on rental rates. And we do see in the Oklahoma City housing market right now that there's a tremendous amount of activity at the lower end of the housing market.
Right.
Right? And so if you look at 100, 175,000-type houses right now, it's multiple offers, it's one or two-day sales, it's incredibly active right now on the lower end of that market. So I don't know how much of, I don't know how much of this is, is a reflection of, I mean, it's just hard to know how much of this is a reflection of primary mortgages for homeownership, how much of it is taking a home equity loan to try to help me survive this weakness in the oil field that we were experiencing in June 2017, right? It's hard to figure out that balance.
Yeah, thank you. Three quick things. One, and I promise three, Mayor, and I'll save your voice. One, I would also love to have this data. I took notes, but I would love to, if I could receive this, just to kind of go through it a bit more. Secondly, the, when we looked at that triangle there in Texas and the economic diversity in the jobs, do you feel like we're still moving in the right direction? And what fields would you identify where we're, you know, diversifying our economy outside of the energy sector, where we should continue to focus our efforts? And, okay, so that's that question.
Sure.
And then thirdly, it's more of a statement, like, of all of my concerns that I have, I would point out that my friends and the people I know, we are so excited about Oklahoma City at the same time. Like, that's the other part. That's one of the reasons why people stay and are still coming here, is we're so excited about Oklahoma City. about this place's possibilities. We just want to make sure that, you know, it stays a place for all of us.
Yeah.
Yes, to the point about the...
Economic diversification.
Please.
So let me make just one comment on, sort of, it's kind of a broad topic, it's kind of circled a few of your comments, is there is, in the field of economics right now, a very open debate about the nature of cities and solving social problems. And so there's sort of one camp that says, as this urbanization continues, you get these rising rental rates, you get income inequality, you create these social challenges, and you get another side of this camp, who would be like an Ed Glazer, who's a famous urban economist, that says, well, that's true, but cities are uniquely equipped to solve some of these social challenges. And so if we can create these social challenges in an area where we can take advantage of the infrastructure that cities provide... And so, you know, your comments sort of make me think about this debate. And there was an interesting panel discussion between two economists on either side of this debate, just fairly recently, and I'll send that over as well. I think you might enjoy reading that commentary. On the diversification, you know, what I've been saying for a couple of years, and I think it's still true, and we'll try to include this in our summer update, is that to understand economic diversification, you need to look not at the industry that has the job, but the occupation within the industry. And so if I look at the oil and gas industry 20 years ago, it's a bunch of geologists and engineers, skill sets aren't that portable. My father was in that industry when it crashed in the '80s. It was either leave the industry altogether, become like a high school science teacher, because your skill sets just weren't very transferable to other industries. Today, the occupations within insider energy industries, database managers, right, supply chain logistics, quantitative programming, you have a lot of, you have more occupational diversity. And so you still see the big oil and gas company, but behind the doors of the company you have a different mix of jobs. And those jobs are a little more transferable, they're more diverse in terms of the occupation. And so one of the things that I think we can include in our summer update, and kind of look at, is where does Oklahoma City now stand in terms of our occupational diversity? And so not just the company that employs the person, but if we look across the people, what diversity and those skill sets do we see in the economy, and how does that portend for future growth?
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So, well, yeah, I'm gonna actually take us out of order, but you knew that.
Yes, yes.
You have three department presentations, and we're gonna start with police.
Right.
But I'm then gonna hijack things.
Yes.
Chief City, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, but you're just gonna stand there for a few minutes. This is Chief City's final week, the end of a remarkable tenure as police chief. And there are some other retirement festivities this week, but this was our opportunity in public and for the council to say a few words about you, and obviously marked by, you know, addition of new police officers, the new police headquarters, but really just remarkable engagement with the community, remarkable professionalism through all these years. The longest-tenured police chief in our city's history, I think it's just a remarkable body of work that you, and legacy that you leave. And I think we all want to talk to that a little bit this morning. So, if you wouldn't mind, indulge us, and I'll start down here with Ward One.
Yep. You've had a remarkable career. I mean, Mayor already said it, but we're gonna miss your temperament, your humility. Every time I talk to you, the concern that you have for your officers and all of the citizen's safety is clearly evident. And I really wish you the best with your next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us to attend your prayer breakfast last week. It was an honor to be up that early, and to be there and to hear you speak. Meeting you has given me such faith in our police force as an institution. I truly, and I don't want these words to sound hollow at all, so I'm gonna choose them very carefully. Your guidance as our country went through some of the most tumultuous moments, from Ferguson to Baltimore, all across this country over the last several years. Your guidance, your wisdom, your patience, your understanding, your compassion, your empathy, you, I believe in my heart of hearts, kept this city from falling into those same destructive, divisive, dark places. And I want to commend you from the bottom of my heart for keeping our city safe, and moving us forward with best practices that we know they're gonna allow us to serve underserved communities better, places of color, of poverty, of disenfranchisement. And I know your heart, and I know that that's where your heart is, is with those people, for all of our people. And I hope that whoever follows in your footsteps is reading whatever book you've left for her, because we're gonna need it as we go forward, because these times are not done with us yet. And I don't think anyone wishes to be born into such times, to quote Gandalf from Lord of the Rings, but I would hope that your predecessor is taking notes on what you've done. And on a final note, as a student of history, as I've watched you over the last few years, you remind me of the work that IG Perser and Clara Looper did together, in keeping those tensions back in the '60s and '70s from going into a much, much worse place. That's what you've done. You are in the history books next to some of our great citizens in the city, and I will make sure that everyone knows that. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Counsel.
It's been a privilege to serve alongside you these last few years. I'd like to congratulate you on your career. I'd like to congratulate you on the accomplishments of you and your staff and the officers during these challenging times. I'd like to congratulate also your lovely wife, who's sitting back here, who, your accomplishments would not be possible without her. But the Christian character that you exploited and shown in every area of your life has been a tremendous beacon of hope for all of us. May God bless you, and may you have a fruitful and productive retirement.
Chief, I would like to first thank you for your interactions with me, and helping me to better understand some of the trials that you've gone through, along with, you know, the rest of the police force, and what they go through on a daily basis. I really appreciate you kind of opening my eyes to all that. But even more so, I would like to thank you for your interaction with our citizens. I remember going down to Grand High School one night, and it was a pretty full crowd in there, and not all of them were as excited to see you as I were, I don't think, but, you know, the way you handled that crowd, the way you communicate with people, you know, you treat them with respect and dignity, but at the same time, you know, your communication is very clear. And that's always to be well-respected, so appreciate everything, I've enjoyed serving with you, and wish you nothing but the best.
Chief, I know that I speak for our entire legal office to say thank you for your honesty, for your leadership, but every time we've worked with you, no matter who the attorney is, or what the item is, that we can, we know what to expect, we know that we're going to get great leadership amongst you and all of your staff, and that we're always going to get the truth, because that's the number-one thing that we always tell you in any lawsuit, tell the truth, and we always know we're getting that from you. Thank you.
Chief, I'm grateful for the opportunity. We've had to work together all these years. Chief City's been a police officer for 41 years, he's been our police chief for 15 years. He's never stopped being a police officer, and that's been in his heart the whole time. And we've been friends, we're coworkers for a long time, and I'm grateful for your leadership, both within the organization and within the community. You leave a hole when you leave, but you also leave a legacy, because you've passed that down through the organization. And something I appreciate about the chief is he's constantly focused on service, but he's constantly reflecting the credit to someone else, and I really appreciate that, appreciate your leadership, and you will be missed.
David?
Chief, thanks for all the, well, you've just made it so easy for every member of the council to serve on the city council in regard, as a result of all of your leadership and efforts to lead an organization that has close contact with the public, and sometimes it's not always under the best terms, but through your leadership, I think they've just done a tremendous job. And again, it's made our lives so much more enjoyable to be a part of the council, and knowing that you're our chief, and we're going to miss you, and we just hope we can find someone close to your stature. Thank you.
Chief, I just want to echo all of the things people have been saying. I know, you know, people generally say that the culture of the chief is the culture of the department, and I think you've just done an amazing job making sure that, as we talk about public safety, it's not punitive, but it's proactive in community outreach, and, you know, culture of de-escalation, and especially, I think one of the first times I ever heard you give public comments was at the Chance to Change banquet a few years ago, and just your close personal knowledge and understanding of mental illness and addiction, and knowing that, you know, everyone that your force is interacting with has a story, and it's not just that moment, but it's, there's more going on, has been really amazing to see, and especially coming from the homelessness outreach services world, knowing that the interactions that your force has with people experiencing homelessness has been, again, that there's a story there, it's not just punitive, that we need to be doing more proactive things, has been, I think, transformative for the city. And I just thank you so much, and I'll echo Councilman Cooper's hopes that we can find someone to fill your shoes in the same way. So thank you.
Well, Chief City, I'll say thank you for your service, and I'm not sure if I mentioned this before, but one of our first encounters was talking on the radio about some things that were going on in the community, and I thank you for being responsive. You took questions from some folks that called in, and they were not easy questions to answer, but you answered them. You took phone numbers from some who left their phone number, and you returned those calls. So I thank you for that. And last week, we were at a meeting, and those members of that community action with policing, they also commended you for being proactive about things that were happening when they had a particular incident, and they just said, can you come? And you did. So that's what it means to be in the community, especially those communities that we know it's not easy to have community policing when those are not reflective of maybe the community that they're serving. So thank you for doing that, and also thank you for being responsive when it came to an internal incident with the community and an officer. You were very responsive, and you made sure that the community knew what was going on. You were very immediate in action, and the community was very aware, and also informed of the step-by-step process afterwards. So that's what it means to be in the community. And also, as she, as Councilwoman Hammond was talking about those social services, I think of Palomar, and the families that are now able to receive all of those wraparound services because of being innovative and agreeing to say, let's try it, let's implement these different plans to make a better Oklahoma City. So thank you for all you do, and also thank you to your wife for sharing us with you for all of these 40-plus years. Now, I urge you to enjoy retirement. Thank you.
I think back to your leadership dating back to the Murrah bombing to present. It's incredible what you've done as far as being one of the greatest leaders in Oklahoma City, and echoing on other comments where we're having problems in Baltimore and Ferguson, and the unspeakable that occurred in Dallas. You were the glue. You kept this city together, and I don't think people appreciate that enough, and so I thank you very, very much for that. As you know, I love your wife, Susan. Many of you don't know this, but last summer I got to go fishing with Chief City, and he caught the biggest fish, of course. So I'm looking forward to more fishing, I'm looking forward to spending more time with you and Susan. But most importantly, I'm looking forward to the next chapter you're gonna write in your book of life, because I know it's gonna be a great story, and I think the best is yet to come. And once again, thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you've done for Oklahoma City, sir.
Thank you, Councilman.
It's a testament to a life well-lived that nine people can speak and really all say different things. I mean, there's so many things that we probably even, between the nine of us, forgot, one or two really amazing things that you've done in your career. So, on behalf of the people of Oklahoma City, thank you so much, Chief City.
Thank you all very much. If you could indulge me just a moment, just specific to, I know we have retirement this afternoon, and there'll be a lot of things said, but since I'm here, specific to the council, I've developed, excuse me, I've developed some wonderful relationships with the council. Consider a lot of you my friends. You care about this community, you care about the people, and you care about the police officers. And I have to thank you so much for all the times and all the struggles and conflicts, because that's, police departments in the business of that. We're in the conflict business, and for you to have the patience and the trust in me and our police department to help work through those, there's no way I could have been chief for 15, anybody could do it as long, if the council and the government was so appropriately functional than this one is. I mean, all the way back to the bombing, all the way back from the very beginning, and the leadership of this council, and our political leaders. And I think that's when I really learned how important our political leaders are to this community, was when the bombing occurred, and how much the people depend on you as their leaders, and the message that you send, and the confidence you have in the police department, and you've shown that. Because we have gone through some tough times, all those tough times we talked about with Ferguson and everything, and the body-worn cameras, and, you know what, we wouldn't have accomplished what we've got today if it hadn't have been for the strength of the council, the trust in the council to work through those issues, because there were so many to work through. And that's happened over the years, and I just want to thank all of you, and I want to thank past council members, because we've had some great council members and mayors that are best in the country. I mean, chiefs have usually fall a lot quicker within three to five years, and it's usually because of a dysfunctional government, is usually what it is. And they're good chiefs, but it's, a lot of it is the politics and the, we just don't have that here. Everybody works well together, and we all get through issues, and you've helped me get through my issues. I could not have done it without the council. So I have a really strong, warm place in my heart for this city, for this council, all of you. I mean, I got excited the other day when we got the new members, and there's a lot of diversity, and there's a lot of, there's so much to get excited about. So I thank you for allowing me to do this job as long as I have. I think one of the greatest things that came out of this job is I met my wife, and I want to thank council, because she was a city auditor, and they could have said, no, you all cannot see each other, that's a conflict, but you worked with us, and you liked my wife better, so, which is okay. I mean, I got lots of threats, if I messed it up, I was history, I would not have been chief for 15 years if I had messed that up. But bless her heart, she has, she's taught me a lot. I mean, the one thing I had that I didn't have a real good, strong knowledge of was finance, and obviously marrying the auditor helped me a lot with that, and she kept me in doing things the right way. So, great staff, I have staff members here, I have, I think, Deputy Chief Corley, I had to leave, but three deputy chiefs, and Mike Striep, our business manager, has been tremendous help. And then, the new assistant, the new Phyllis Coffey, who was my assistant for years. Now, my assistant is Sergeant Josh Minter, so remember his name, get his number. If you need stuff from the chief's office, call him, he's gonna start taking care of those things. Now, he may be there a little bit more, because he doesn't shop as much as Phyllis did at lunchtime. So, anyway, you know, it's just, it's a great staff, and it's just a great community. So thank you all very much for the kind words. I've never taken any of your trust or any of those things for granted over the years, and for you to say those things are very meaningful to me. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, very much.
Okay, so...
You want to do your presentation now?
I guess so.
I'm gonna, I have to depart, I'm gonna turn over the gavel to Vice Mayor McAteer.
So, I want to, I do want to first thank Doug and his staff, I mean, always such a great working relationship and working through issues and things, and they do such a great work, and we really appreciate that. Okay, our first, our mission statement remains the same. It's the mission of the police department is to provide public safety services and promote a safe environment, and lessen the fear of crime to the Oklahoma City community, so they can experience an enhanced quality of life. So our proposed budget this year is, total budget is $214 million. It's about a 2.73% increase over last year. And so you break... And so, you break, excuse me, you break that down and, and you can see where the majority of our, our funding comes from general fund, sales tax, the majority of that is salaries. We have police sales tax, which is a dedicated sales tax. It was passed back in the eighties, late eighties. So, we have a police sales tax. It's dedicated to police and I know fire has that also. Then you have our 911 communication system and then some smaller categories. So, budget changes for this year, so you're going to see the first, first one is changes in personnel-related costs. Have that every year. That goes up consistently such as salaries, merit, retirement, health. And that, obviously, that's the biggest part of our budget, 5.7 million. This year, we've added two system support specialists, ones to the support, to support our new record management system. That went online last week, Wednesday, and by the way, it's going very, very well. Quite a few years in the making, but tremendous, tremendous change in our record management system. And we'll talk a little bit about that later on because you're going to see some changes in data that you'll be receiving and be getting in a lot, a lot, a lot quicker and a lot different way. So, we've added two just to help manage that. We've added two police dispatch ones to address increased workload. Our crime information unit is our unit that takes calls on warrants and things like that and that's increasing and so we're expanding that unit. We're also, we've added a firearms examiner to investigations. Firearms, really qualified firearms examiners are few and far between. It's very hard to fill those positions. We've had a backlog of our firearms. We're, we get more and more firearms every year, more and more. And we try to examine as many of those as we can because we can, at many times, we can clear crimes just by examining those firearms, actually shooting them and getting ballistics off of them. And we can clear crimes even though we may, we know the guns used and at some point, we can, we figure out who it is, it's evident. So, we, it's really essential that we do that with the number of firearms we're getting. We're adding a quality assurance specialist to our 911. I've been wanting to do this for years, so I'm glad to be able to do it on my, my, my last year on my way out. So, this really adds that somebody that checks are, actually we're hoping to make it more efficient because they actually are proactive in looking at calls that come into 911 and see if our dispatchers are handling them appropriately. We're hoping it'll cut down on complaints. We're hoping that'll be just a better checks and balance. It's basically an ongoing audit of our dispatchers to make sure they're giving the right information and handling, handling calls appropriately. So, we're going to add three computer forensic specialists to conduct examinations of digital and electronic media devices. We actually used to have sworn person, people in, in that position. They did those investigations and we're, it's harder to keep them in there with promotions and things like that. So, we actually are converting those over to, to non-sworn positions. So, we're, so we're adding those. Adds two crime scene investigators to conduct initial, initial criminal investigations on non-emergency calls. Those are the CIS positions that we hire. We're hiring people out of college with college degrees. We used to have police officers in those positions. We found that those persons that want to make a career out of that are much more efficient. They really provide better reports. They're more excited about doing that work. Officers at some point get tired of doing that type of work and so we, we really feel like it's, it's been a great program, so we're adding that. We, that is also, we're sworn positions and we're actually converting those to non-sworn. And we're doing that through attrition that we agreed on quite a few years back with the Ftern Order Police. So, we add two police service technicians and two police dispatchers provide coverage at Will Rogers World Airport. They're, they're really wanting to improve the flow of traffic. If you've ever been down on the bottom, flow of traffic when flights come in, they want to add additional personnel to that. The trust is actually funding that. So, as you can see, here's our budget and, and, and you can see, and I think, I think the city manager had referenced it earlier, you can see between 2018 or I think, or maybe Doug did, 2018 to 2019, you can see a really spike in our budget. That's because of the 129 positions that, that you had added. And again, those, those positions aren't all filled. Currently, we, currently, just to give you an idea, we have 1,075 officers right now. We had, we had about 1,044 when you added the 129 positions. And you keep in mind, we have to fill positions through attrition if somebody retires. So, we're, we're trying to fill those positions and also fill those added, those new positions that you added. It does take some time, but we're hoping to have all those filled by, at the end of 2020. That means we'll have all of our vacancies and then all the 129 that you've added to, to the department. Currently, we, we have authorized 1,235. Again, we have 1,075 currently. We have 77 in our recruit class, so if you add those 77, the total number of officers we have right now is going to be 1,152. So, and so that put, that puts you about 70-something or 80-something short of, of what we added. And so, again, we're having, we have the largest class we've ever had. We have 63 in a class right now. We did a lateral this year. We had 14. We don't think that's going to work out that well, so we probably won't do that again. But at least for right now, we'll have another big class. We're really shooting for 75 in the next class. And we, and we'll probably start doing some overlap. So, trying to get those positions filled and I think recruiting and training are doing a pretty good job of that. So, the distribution of personnel, as you can see, you've got a slide up there. The, the large slide there in E should be operations 62%. The slot, the next smaller one is investigations 20%. That's where our two largest slot, that's where our two largest categories are, investigations and operations. Okay, one of our, our results, one of our issues and our results for our issues, a greater need for police presence and services. Of course, we've had that for quite some time because we, we have, we have, we have had a need for added personnel. And the goal is by 2020, police presence and services will adequately increase while maintaining the level of course services citywide. And we kind of gauge that by, well, we don't kind of, we gauge that through the survey that the city does. One of the questions on the survey is feel safe citywide. You can see in 2017, the survey showed 53%. Our benchmark has been 55% since 2005, when the survey started. We use that as a benchmark. We started the surveys back in 2005 at, well, we didn't start the surveys then. We started LFR back then and it was 55%. So, you can see in 17, 53%. We fell off in 2018 to 50%. And again, our target is 55. And it's going to go up and down some. We'll see what the next survey shows and hopefully with the added positions and more people on the street, it will help that. That's, that's theoretically, that's the hope. Satisfied or very satisfied with the quality of police service has pretty much maintained the same. It was 70, it was 72% when we, we set the target years ago and it's been, it's been 71% in 17 and 18. So, greater need for police presence. Another part of the results is percentage of priority one calls responded to within nine minutes and 30 seconds. When we did the staffing study, when we did the staffing study for the need for police officers, future and present, we set, part of that was how fast we respond to priority calls. These are the calls of, for service where human life may be in danger or other things that, that require us to, to respond quickly. So, that percentage in fiscal year 18 was, fiscal year 18 was 73%. For 19, as, up till, up as of March 19th, it is 73%. Our goal is 80%. So, 80% is a pretty lofty goal. I think it's, it's something we can accomplish as we add more personnel to our, to our ranks. So, part of that also is, is measuring investigation clearance rates and we can, we compare, compare that to our national average of other cities. So, if you look at 2017 national UCR average for person crimes is 46%. In 2018, ours is 45%. So, we're, we're right there on target with the, with the national. Now, if, if you look at comparable cities for that, and it's, it's really better to compare ours to a city our size because your clearance rate's going to be a little bit less, it's about 43%, about 43 and a half and we're, and we're at 45%. So, we're doing a little bit better than the cities that, that, that look like us anyway. Property crimes, we're not doing quite as well, both in the average national UCR and then also in the comparable cities our size because that is 17 and a half percent. So, we're still below that and we've kind of slipped, we've kind of slipped some. We've prioritized other areas. We've prioritized domestic violence. We've prioritized some other person crimes. When you do that, you move personnel out of some of the lower, you know, you know, like property crimes. It's not quite as high priority, not that it's not important. I've always said, if somebody's going to be victimized in Oklahoma City, it's going to be a by-property crime. It's not going to be by-person crime. So, to have that as low as it is, we need to do better on that. And we have, what we've done with the 129 positions is the staff, we have met and we went through all those positions and looked at where the needs were. And so, there is a, there is a plan on where those 129 are going to go. Now, most of those are going to go into the field. We need them in the field and responding to calls, but we also have a really critical need of, of putting more individuals in investigations. And so, there is a plan to do some of that as, as well as some other areas. And we are adding, actually, we talked about the Family Justice Center just a little bit briefly, we're adding a couple more detectives to the domestic violence unit, which is needed because they have pretty heavy caseload. Strategies for, for, for this issue of violent crime. You can see here that we want to improve community engagement and police presence in strategic areas using our safe grants. We've had safe grants through the Attorney General's Office for several years. Overall, they've been pretty successful. And we want to continue our efforts to reduce crime through community-based programs and social outreach. That's proactive programs. That's, that's working with inner-city youth. That's working with inner-city issues. Our cadet program, our fact program, our truancy program, which has been very successful working with the Oklahoma City Public Schools. We have our new, we have a new, you know, leadership program, working with the courts, our programs with the courts right now and trying to get low-level juveniles that have been involved in crime, first-time offenders into some of our programs. The JIP program, our juvenile intervention program has worked really great. It's provided a service to our municipal courts and really, really try to get at kids before they, they, they get into more trouble and it's been very, very successful. All right, our South, our South Oklahoma City, South Oklahoma grant, these are, again, these are the Attorney General grants. This is where the Attorney General's receiving money through the legislature to actually give out to programs across, across the whole state of Oklahoma. Since the beginning of it, I mean, I think it's what, the last three or four years, we've had it. We've received funds every year. Our proposals have been well-received by the Attorney General's Office. This one is the South Oklahoma City grant. It encompasses an area, southwest 29th, southwest 16th and South May Avenue to South Walker. And really, you can see here, as a result of some of our efforts, it's a combination of a multitude of efforts. We do have some patrol, some overtime programs and that, but we also do some proactive things, door-to-door, talking to the citizens, finding out what their concerns are. Not only does it help with community relations, but it also identifies what their concerns are. Sometimes the biggest, sometimes their biggest crime concern is the, is the tall weeds across the street and they're worried about people hiding in the weeds. Well, we can, we can help that by working with the city to get those cut. That may be their concern or it may be speeding. It may not be the gang member two doors down, but it may be that also. And while doing what we're doing, getting out of the car and talking to everybody in the neighborhood, it empowers them to talk to us and makes them more at ease to talk to us because they're not calling us and getting identified by anybody else in the neighborhood as the one that may have what they snitched them off. So, if we talk to everybody, then everybody, they can blame everybody. And so, it kind of empowers them, does wonders for us, for community relations and for the officers. It, you know, it reaches out, especially to the minority communities. It helps the officers realize that they really do like us and they really do want our help. And they find that out pretty quickly. So, you can see here, violent crime in the target area in, in northeast has decreased by 31.6% during the 11th month evaluation period compared to the previous four years. Then you can see the categories broken down separately, like homicide was reduced by 38.5% rape, 47% robbery, 15. Other, other felony assaults and simple assaults anywhere from 16 to 45.5%. So, you can see where it's, it's really, it really has been a benefit in those areas in reducing some of the crime. And these are our high viol, they're identified as high violent crime areas. That's what the target is and that's what the purpose is of these grants. So, we think it's been very successful and, and hopefully, we can continue that. Hopefully, those grants will keep coming through the state. We will keep, we will keep it, you know, we will, we will continue to give our applications to the state in hopes of getting that. We won't stop doing that as long as they're giving out the money. We evaluate our program through UCO. UCO School of Criminal Justice Center there, we contract with them because we, we have an independent evaluation. This isn't us evaluating our own program. This is UCO evaluating us as an independent and they provide us with a report, report on how we're doing. So, any report we do on this is not, is itself-serving. It's actually, it's done independently. So, violent crime reduction, here you can see across the city and the, and the different divisions where the, where some, they crisscross some of our violent crime. We use Viper Zones. Viper Zones are, we use those overtime, pay overtime officers, to put more officers into those areas where there's violent crime. The overtime, the overtime that's used is funding that, from the new positions that you have authorized. So, you've authorized 129 positions. We've obviously filled about, say, 50 of them up to this point. The remainder of that, we have that money in our budget and the city manager has given us authority to use that money to pay overtime, to add more officers in the field until we can get those positions filled. So, that money is still being used for police officers in those areas. So, even though we haven't filled the position. Now, once we get those positions filled, the Viper Programs technically would go away because the, because we wouldn't have the funding to do that. So, you can see here in the Spring Lake Viper Zone, 16% overall decrease in violent crime. We've got them color-coded. I know you can't completely read the streets, but you can get a general idea where those zones are. Santa Fe Viper Zone, 4% overall decrease in violent crime. Santa Fe is basically southeast and runs up, runs north up to the northeast unit. Hefner Viper Zone is 14% overall increase. It's the only area where we actually had an increase, but the number is so small, the number is like, I think we had 21 additional crimes out of 172. So, with a small number, the percentage isn't as meaningful. So, that's the only area that you have the increase, but the, the numbers are very small. 16% decrease in property crime. So, everywhere except, except the, the Hefner, but Hefner does have the, the fewer violent crimes. Results also for issue violent crime, it's by 2020, the police department will address the rise in violent crime and gang violence by reducing the number of aggravated assaults citywide by 5% and then the number of gang-related deadly weapon assaults by 20%. Now, we, the 5%, this is, this is the, this is probably the most negative thing about this report is going to be in reference to aggravated assaults. And we're going to show you a chart and probably where, if I have any concern over anything as far as crime goes, it's going to be in this category. So, when we, when we started this, we, we picked 5% and it was, it, the numbers, the numbers were fairly, you know, they weren't too bad when we started this, but we still wanted to continue to, to reduce it by 5%. And I'll show you a chart next and probably it's better if I show you that. But you can see aggravated assaults in 2018, actuals was 3697. In fiscal year 2009, to date, at seven months, it's 2476. At that rate, we're looking at estimate 2019, 4245. That number should be concerning to everybody and primarily because it's, it's been going up the last four years. So, it is becoming, it is becoming a trend as a result of that many years and 4245 is, is, is too many. So, we're going in the wrong direction. Our target, as you can see there, is actually 3512 if we based it on a 5% reduction over when we started this, actually tracking this. Now, the number of gang-related deadly weapon assaults by 20% is to reduce it. So, we've been doing, we've been doing okay with that because we just haven't had that many. I mean, everybody thinks that it's, a lot of stuff's gang-related. There are a lot of gang-related shootings, but actual assaults where they actually shoot somebody and hit somebody are a lot fewer. So, you can see in 18, we had 19. We just started tracking this a couple of years ago and created this measurement. So, in, in 2019, for the, for our first nine months, we had 14. So, we're on track to have the same numbers we had last year. Our target is actually 15. So, if you look at drive-bys, I'll just give you a comparison. Now, a lot of drive-bys are related to gang-related shootings where they don't hit anybody. So, they're not going to be caught up in this category where they're actually an assault. For it to be assault, they have to actually hurt somebody. For it to be assault, they have to actually hurt somebody. And they do do a lot of shooting, but they don't always hit anybody, which is still dangerous, obviously. But our peak was in 2012, we had 192 drive-bys in 2012. So, last year, we had 78. So, over the years, we've reduced those drive-bys considerably. So, and we're kind of, right now, the numbers look like we're on track to have about 84, so it would be a slight increase over last year. But again, if, the, the gang-related shootings are, there's not a big number there, but the number is, it's worth counting because we do work our, our gag activity quite a bit, and we do want to keep track of that. So, our aggravated assaults total, here's, here's the concerning, here's the concerning part. And it's really based on the numbers that I, that I, that I talked about previously. But, you know, in 2019, we're, we're going to estimate, so you can see in 18, we had 3987, which is a, is a significant, when you're looking at 500 more assaults, aggravated assaults, that is, that's huge. That is significant. And I, I tell people, you know, the, the front page of the paper, at the, at the big, end of every year for the year will be how many homicides we have. It's either up or down, everybody wants to gauge it by that, but it's, we shouldn't be gauging it by homicides because that, that ebbs and flows, that goes up and down. And I can't, I can't tell you what it's, if it's going to go down or go up from year to year, like, because all homicide is, is a, is a, is a serious assault with the worst outcome. All these are, all these are potential homicides. And so, and these have been going up. Aggravated assaults have been going up. I think, I think across the country, you'll see, for a while, for the last several years, they've had a trend of them going down, you're starting, you're starting to see them creep back up. Ours has been creeping up even while others were going down over several years ago. We have been working those areas pretty hard. You can see with, you can see with our grants and things, there's a reduction in the areas that we work, but these shootings are occurring everywhere, all over the city. And so, and our, and our gang issue is different than some other cities because our gangs, our gangs are, we got 621 square miles to cover where others may have 100 square miles to cover. So, we're not as concentrating, they have, they're very mobile, and the shootings can occur just about, just about anywhere. So, and they do. But it's, it's, it's something that we really have to focus on because this is not, this is not a good trend. So, and, and I'll, you know, I was, sometimes I get myself into trouble and cause large discussions that, I try not to do it too much, not as much as I used to, but firearms, we have a lot of firearms in this community. And the more firearms you have, the more access to them, the more, more you're going to have. And there are studies out now that actually show that. It's not anecdotal, it's not me sitting up here telling you that that's what I think because, because the gun laws and more relaxed gun laws are more prevalent now all across the country. So, there's actually long-term better data research, they've had time to research those things. And the most recent, CDC, the most recent research really shows that those, those communities that, that have more restrictive access to firearms, that doesn't mean people don't have access, it just means they make sure good people have firearms. I'm a supporter of that, of having, being able to own your firearm. But, there's things we can do and we should do as far as restricting that, but the communities that have that have lower level, they have less suicides, they have less assaults involving firearms. It, it's just becoming a fact now, it's not so much anecdotal. So, I feel more comfortable saying it, and people don't ask for, for your jobs when I say it, and they don't ask for mine. I think when I used to do that when I first came on, I felt so bad, I felt so bad for the councilman because people were wanting the councilman fired for something I said. So, I made a lot of phone calls back in the early days saying, "It's not the councilman saying it, it's me." The councilman may not even believe, believe, you know, agree with me. So, I kind of backed off because I felt, I felt bad about that. All right, let's, so let's look at the jail population. Now, you know, you know, you've seen this, this is a, this is a great, this is just a, this is great stuff. This is, this is just a great trend. Because you're, what you're seeing is you're seeing both police and courts working together. This is judicial reform, this is, this is about reducing the number of people in our jails, and it's just been a tremendous success. Police Department, you know, we can, we can take credit for some of it, but you have to give just as much credit to the courts. They've worked very, very hard in, in putting, putting things like, you know, they have at least eight energy hearings per week where they didn't, I don't know, how many they had, but they had maybe one or if any at times. They've done a great job because we're putting less people in that can't afford to pay because they'll never be able to afford to pay, and they're not serious criminals. So, you know, we've eliminated arrests for failure to pay warrants, so if they just fail to pay their warrant, we don't make arrests. We may issue them another ticket, but we don't take them and book them into jail and have them there for four or five days for no reason because they're going to get out, we're going to pick them up again, they're going to come back in, they're still going to not pay. So, and, you know, that's, there's a lot of people like that that can't afford to. They're doing a better job of courts at, you know, payouts and, and really cutting down the, the actual fine for people that can't pay, so they can pay a percentage of what they, what they probably can't afford. We increased usage of our PIA, which we've been doing that for several years, but we've also, we've also really, we've identified a lot of things that we don't put people in jail for. I mean, we've had them, we've had them for several years. Last year, the council agreed to allow us to reduce the penalties for just simple possession of marijuana, which I think, you know, I mean, it's what we should be doing, we shouldn't be booking people in for just minor possession. So, that was put in last year, that and paraphernalia, which also helps. So, you can see the number of people incarcerated from municipal charges since fiscal year 15 is, is 49%. That's half. That's huge. And then the percentage of average hours incarcerated from municipal charges per person is down 33%. Again, I just, I kudos to courts and for the work that they've, they've done also in working with us and my staff and coming up with a lot of these things where we really don't need to be putting people in jail for. That doesn't mean we don't hold them accountable. I don't believe in that. I believe that, I think judicial reform, if I can just editorialize a little bit, judicial reform is about fairness. It's not about not letting, making people be responsible. We have laws in place because people need to abide by those laws. So, just letting them off the hook and not putting them in jail is, is, we just need to find other ways to hold them accountable that's more fair. And I'm, I'm a firm believer in that. So, a couple of new things, active shooter rescue teams. Do we, the video? So, what you see here is what you don't see in a lot of, a lot of cities. Now, you're seeing more of it, but you don't see it as much. You see a bunch of cops taking care of a bunch of firefighters. And firefighters there to, are there to go in and, and render aid to victims in mass shootings. So, if we have a mass shooting, you'll have, you've had some, and if, Richard can correct me, right, because we have such a great working relationship with the fire department here, and we train together. This isn't the only thing we train on, but a lot of firefighters in other communities in major cities will not do this. They won't do it. And, you know, I think they're starting to come around some, but, you know, we've got firefighters that have trained with us off and on for different, different things on the tactical unit, and that, but this active shooter, this is, this is incredible because they're going in unarmed, trusting us to protect them while we drop them off if somebody's been shot and is hurt and needs, needs our aid. We're not waiting, we're not waiting for everybody to have, have medical service go in, the fire department's going in to render that. And we'll go in and render it safe because the suspect is, is, we have to go in and we have to make sure that suspect is contained. But, once we do that, we're not hanging around waiting for people to suffer. We're bringing those firefighters in, you know, protected to make sure that, that they can, they get medical help more quickly than they used to on these active shooter situations. We also started a new system in our active shooter, which is recon, that actually goes in before this, and actually goes in and identifies where, where victims may be so that they can more quickly get to those persons. So, and those are police that go in. So, the training for our active shooter is tremendous. I have, I have full confidence, and I hope we never, hope we never need it, but, you know, chances are, we will, and I think we're as, as prepared as anybody in the country to respond to that quickly. Our, our patrol officers are the ones that go out and respond because we don't want them just standing around, they're, they're taught to go in. Police Athletic League. Okay, for our police athletic leagues, again, it's probably, I think if you talk to other cities, it's probably one of the best in the country. I mean, we have more, we have more activities and more, more kids and stuff involved in it. You can see in 2018 school year, 48 elementary schools, 3,200 students participating in seven PAL sports programs. PAL programs now include football, basketball, you can see all the, all the different sports. 500 teachers, police officers, community volunteers serving this year. Those are volunteers, those are unpaid, those are unpaid persons, including our own council member Todd Stone, who's just probably one of the best soccer coaches that ever lived.
I, I would agree with you on that. Unfortunately, I can't coach this year, so.
You can't?
I'm, I'm not going to be able to.
Okay.
I know, I feel terrible.
Just think of those children, they're going to be disappointed.
I know. Well, hopefully, they get a better coach, if possible, a better coach than me.
You'll be back, you'll be back. No, but he's, he has done that for years, and we, we thank you for doing that. But those volunteers are unpaid. I mean, if you think of the dollars to the city for, for going out and working with our inner-city kids, we, we calculated the dollars one time, I know Craig and I sat down and went through the dollars years ago, remember, over PAL, and it's tremendous. The dollar amount that the volunteers provide is just tremendous. So, the schools are changing pathways, the pathways to greatness plan, it's going to change some things because you're, the fifth, the fifth and sixth graders, the ones that we targeted are now no longer going to be in elementary school, they're going to be in middle school. So, the PAL program is moving to the middle school. So, when they're there, they're still going to get the program, they're getting some of the same programs. The program model will not change, football, volleyball, basketball, cheerleading, soccer will still be available to fifth and sixth graders. The plan to offer up to four teams per sport to each of our schools to accommodate the number of students currently assessing PAL, accessing PAL program. This shift will increase program efficiency between our programs and the Oklahoma City Public Schools. Athletics and valued partners like Field and Futures. So, we're working with Fields and Futures, which is redoing all the fields. The public school system has been tremendous in, in having us in there and working with us to create these programs. Along with the sports, we also, we also, our PAL officers teach programs, you know, for character building and things like that. And so, it's not just about playing sports, but it's about playing together as a team in, in sports. And so, and I know that the, I know Sam Presti himself donated a significant amount of money to bring in the peace players, which he'd been involved in for years, the international group, that came in, and he, he is spending the money to teach our coaches how to interact and be better coaches for those, for these programs. So, and he, he's done that personally, this is not a thunder, this is, you know, this is a large, large donation by Sam Presti himself. I think he did that, he did that, he's been doing that for a couple of years now. So, we have just so much community support and, in that program, and again, it's, it's, it's thriving. Family Justice Center, I think you all know how close I am to this. So, in 2018, 3,266 adults served the Family Justice Center. I, I, I think overall, it was probably closer to 4,000. But you also look at, this doesn't, this doesn't, that, that 3,000 doesn't include the 1,300 children. I think overall now, it's up over 6,000, including, including the children, because most, most victims of violence, most women and victims of violence have one, two, or three children. And the children are also victims of violence also, and they need, they also need our assistance. So, we have 12 detectives and two lieutenants at Palomar. We have two safety advocates there, but we're getting ready to increase our detectives. The caseload is tremendously high, and it's been such a success working with all the other agencies, legal aid, Department of Human Services, mental health, addiction, like Chance to Change is, is there. There's so many, there's about 28 different agencies in that, in that building right now, working together to support our, our families of domestic violence. Our hope, our camp hope is tremendous. If you ever get a chance to go out and, and see what goes on there, I never thought in a week's time you could change a kid's life that's so damaged as somebody that's been involved in domestic violence. I have seen it with my own eyes, them change in a week. And that we provide, that Palomar provides ongoing meetings, access to these kids of domestic violence, so that we just don't leave, we don't have a camp and we never see them again. They come together, they also have access to counselors, have access to counselors to provide to those kids. The transition, some of those kids have gone from, first kid I met when I went out there, the first camp, he was, he was wanting to kill everybody, he wanted to stab everybody. And he was very, he was abused child. And by the end of that week, I saw him, he was serving everybody in the food line. All he wanted to do was serve and help every kid in that food line. And he's been to every camp since, and the change, the second year I got there, because he was hard to adopt, because he was out, kind of, he was always from foster family, foster, well, you know, nobody wants to adopt a child that's wanting to kill everybody. So, the second year, he'd been adopted, and this kid, his name was Tony. So, tremendous, tremendous program. Crisis Intervention Team, our CIT team, you know, we've been in existence, MT Berry started this when I was the deputy chief, and we've just carried on his legacy, and it has been a tremendous, tremendous program. And it's still surprises, it surprised me up to several years ago, whenever, when we had Ferguson, we had all the problems, the mental health talk, that major cities didn't have this, and we'd had it since 2002. And we've improved upon that, we've increased our numbers. We have now, we do have a, a second-year agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health. But to add, we have one full-time police officer that actually works with service providers. And they go out with a service provider, and they knock on a door, because if somebody hasn't shown up for their medication, like, they're supposed, or they haven't made their counseling, our officer goes to the door with the service provider, knocks on the door, and says, "Where have you been? You haven't, you haven't picked up your medication, can we take you to get your, that we will transport them to get their medication?" And these are people we've identified that are chronic, and that call, our officers are taking call after call after call. This has reduced our calls for service. One house can, numerous calls in a month has reduced that. One person that used to come here quite often, I don't want to say his last name, his first name's Roy, who used to come here quite often, I think you know him, is in this program. He hasn't been to council, has he? He has not been here, and I was wondering where he was, and I didn't even know this, but he's in this program. And I, and, and talked to him on the phone, and he is, he's a success story in this program. We're also, we're doing, the Department of Mental Health has a, a, they had, they had some projects in other counties, and I talked to Terry White because it was a really neat idea, and she got a grant. So, we're going to provide 158 iPads to all of our CIT officers, so that they can do, they can actually do services on the spot with the iPad and the service provider, we may not have to transport. They can make a decision whether this person needs to be admitted, whether they would take this person, or whether this person needs to be taken to the hospital. So, in many way, in many cases, this person, we, we'll be able, they'll be able to evaluate this person while we're standing there on this iPad, so we're going to have connection to the service providers via the iPad. So, and they're funding all that, it's a grant, we don't have them in place yet, but the grant's been funded, and we will, we will be able, and every one of our, every one of them will have access to that. As I said, it's expected to decrease on call time for initial crisis assessments. So, our new record management system, again, it's, I mentioned it briefly, it's been years in the making. Our staff, IT, I'm telling you, if you don't work with them, and I know very little about IT stuff, but they, they're incredible. And in fact, when, when we kicked this off last, I think we kicked it off last Wednesday, we, we went live with our new RMS system because our old one's been in existence for 30 years or so. We thought it would crash 25 years ago. But it's, the new, this new RMS system, the company that came in, have had people here for, when we turned it on, we kind of had a war room to kind of, to kind of, you know, as problems were happening, we would fix that. They have, they, they commented about our group of individuals with this city, and said, "You have got the best people in IT of any city they've ever seen." And the way we've done this, and the way we've put this together, it has been the smoothest transition with the fewer problems than any place they've ever been. In fact, they said from now on, they're going to recommend the way we do it to other cities that are going to implement that same thing. So, your IT, IT people, the officers that I have in IT have been working on it, had one captain, he was, he was, he was temporarily assigned seven years ago, and he's still, but he, it's finally coming to fruition. So, just, just tremendous job they've done, you should be very proud of, of the city staff. So... be very proud of, of the city staff. So, the, the RMS system, the one thing it's going to do, it's going to, it's going to count crimes differently. So, for instance, for instance, if you get, if you get a break-in, so if you have a, if you have a, by now, if you were to have a burglary, and there's two crimes have been committed, if you have a burglary and then you also have an assault, then, then the greater, the greater crime would be captured, and we would report that, which would be the, really, if it's a serious assault, it would be a serious assault. That would be captured. You'd never see the burglary in the crime stats. Now, you're going to see every single crime. You're going to see burglary, you're going to see serious assault, you may see the burglary or rape. The rape, rape used to be counted, and the burglary wouldn't. You're going to see all of them. So, don't be shocked if you see, "Well, we got more crimes this year, but we're counting more." Now, what they do is they convert that, because UCR is the National Crime Statistics, which the FBI does. What, what, what the state does when we report that is they convert all that back into UCR to report to the state, because comparisons are made across the, across the United States by UCR. Not everybody has NIBRs. Not, this is, I mean, the standard, everybody's supposed to go to the standard, I think, they keep bumping it up, like 2022. We already have it with our new system. Some major cities have it, a lot of cities don't. Smaller cities can't afford it, may never have it. So, the comparison has to still be converted to UCR for right now. But you're going to, we're going to still be reporting data with, with, under the cyber, it's a, you know, standard system that we report them. You're going to get a lot more, you're going to see statistics a little different. So, in five years, we'll really be able to see, be able to compare those same numbers. But it's going to take a while to get there. So, people might be saying crimes going up in this area significantly, when actually, it wasn't counted correctly in the first place. So, it's going to take a while to get there. Our blue team, and I've been here, up here too long, Blue Team and iProbe. Blue Team is just a, a software system that really, it helps our managers actually track tasks and do tasks and enter stuff into those. If you can see our blue team, the data, the entry, administrative investigation. So, if we get a complaint, we do administrative investigation, it traps all that. One of the issues that I always had is I can't, I couldn't just go in there and see how many complaints we've had in all the other divisions, you know, because it's, we just, it just, it was too much information. This now, it's all entered, they trap it, citizen complaints, use of force incidents. When our attorney, when Rick Smith or Amanda says, "I need the stats of how many you've had this year, or within the last three years," boom, we hit a button, and you'll get it much more quickly. So, this, this system is going to be tremendous. It's, and our use of force, it tracks our use of forces better, de-escalation reviews, our vehicle pursuits, we track all those now. We do a lot of it by hand. Now, we do enter all the data, but all of it now will be entered by supervisors, and it'll be real-time. So, we'll have that information more quickly. And then officer-involved collisions. So, the blue teams, it's, there's a lot of other things we can use it for, and I know that, that it'll, it's going to be, it's going to be evaluated for that. Thanks. Thank you. That's all that's left. Appreciate it. Thank you for all the comments. Thank you for the privilege of being chief. Thank you for the privilege of giving my last budget. And I wish everybody the best. Good luck.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Any questions to the chief? Seeing none, that's, which one do you want to do next?
So, next up, we have Public Transportation with Jason Fairbrush, our Director of Embark in Public Transportation. So, let him make his presentation.
So, good morning, Vice Mayor, Council. Pleased for the opportunity this morning to present the FY20 budget for the Public Transportation and Parking Department. We'd like to take a minute just to recognize a couple of staff that were very helpful in preparing the budget presentation and the overall budget document. We have Melissa Rousey here. She's our Financial Services Manager, as well as Michael Scroggins here, who's working the technology. And also, we'd like to thank the Budget Office for all their help getting it, getting us to this point. So, as we start the presentation this morning, we really have it arranged in a way to familiarize council with our family of services. And we're going to do that first by looking at who we are, take a look at what we've done, and then some survey data that'll give you a sense of what people are saying about us. We'll transition over to our four areas of focus, which are tied to the issues that we've identified in our strategic business plan. And then we'll finish with just a summary look at our overall budget for transportation and parking services. So, our mission is to provide public transportation and downtown parking services to the residents and visitors of the greater Oklahoma City area, so they can experience friendly, convenient, safe, and affordable transit and parking services. And in addition to managing downtown parking, we are a multimodal transit agency, and extremely pleased with the ability to add an additional mode of transportation this year with the launch of the Oklahoma City Streetcar. Looking back at what we've done this year with the resources provided by council in our budget, we've had a very busy year. We started our fiscal year with the addition of an additional night route, Route 22, which serves Martin Luther King all the way up to 63rd Street, connecting Metro Tech, the zoo, Remington Park, Oklahoma City County Health Campus that's up there. And so, we continue that incremental improvement on night service. We finished a big capital improvement project with the Sheridan Walker Parking Garage. I'm sure you've driven by the location, you've seen the mural on the outside of the building. We're really pleased with how the mural turned out. But the capital project was much more involved than that. We ended up renovating some, some elevator cabs, we redid the stairwells, we restriped the garage, we painted all, repainted all the painted surfaces, added energy-efficient LED lighting. And so, we wrapped that project up in September. And then, of course, in December was very exciting, I think, for the entire city, and that was the launch of the Oklahoma City Streetcar Service. We had a great opening weekend. Again, just as a reminder, that February, or I'm sorry, that Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we provided over twenty-thousand passenger trips during our opening weekend. And then, in January, another huge day for us, January 27th, the launch of Sunday Bus Service in Oklahoma City. You can see a familiar face down there on the bottom right. And we appreciate all the support from council and the Board of Trustees in helping bring that Sunday service to fruition. So, what are people saying? We got a couple of survey results to share with you. And this is the, this is data from the important, the Importance Satisfaction Index that is shared with council by the consultant that does the resident survey each year. So, you'll probably be familiar with this information. But just as a reminder, you know, when, when residents are asked, you know, what's important to them and what their satisfaction levels are, we all know the condition of city streets is by far the most important thing that comes to light in that resident survey. It's also one of the areas where there's the least amount of satisfaction. And so, that translates to that Important Satisfaction ranking of that being, you know, first. So, how does that translate, or how does that work for public transit? When you follow that same methodology down to public transportation in terms of Important Satisfaction rating, we're number three on the list. So, twenty-four percent, almost a quarter of the respondents believe that public transportation is important. Only twenty percent, or about one in five, are satisfied with where it's at. So, again, I think the incremental improvements and the resources that have been provided to public transit are certainly in line with resident expectations. We also do a customer survey each year to find out how we're performing with our customer base, those that actually use our system. And over here on the left, you can see survey results from February of 2019. We just wrapped this survey up. We received a seventy, seventy percent of the respondents indicated they were either very satisfied or satisfied with the Embark Bus Service. And one of the things we're really pleased with this year especially is the very satisfied category there, where we have thirty-six percent of the respondents saying they're very satisfied. That's the highest percentage of very satisfied responses we've received. In fact, you have to go all the way back to 2015, when we had just launched our, our system realignment to even come, you know, to come close to that. And even then, it was thirty percent. So, we're really pleased with the results there. We also always ask our customers, what kind, what kind of improvements would you like to see in the transit service? And you can see here by looking at the, the numbers in the, the bar graph on your right, that more weeknight buses running until midnight, so more night service, and more, more frequent service on the weekends are really the top two things that, that our customers are looking for. But really followed very, very closely, I'd say a close second is more shelters at stops and more frequent service on the weekdays. And then later, weekend service kind of rounds out the, the top five desires of our customers for improved transit. So, we'll shift our discussion now to really kind of our strategic business plan and how it's integrated with our budget. As you'll recall, the Public Transportation Parking, just like every city department, we do engage in a strategic business planning process. We update that on a regular basis. And one of the most helpful things, I think, for us as a department, through that strategic business planning process, is identifying our issues. And the issues are really the major challenges that are facing the department in the coming years. And so, we get an opportunity as a planning team to recognize those and figure out, how are we going to deal with them before they become unmanageable issues? And so, for us, we've really narrowed it to four areas of focus, or four issues. The first one really speaks to the, the health of our assets and equipment, or our state of good repair. The wellness or well-being of our employees ties directly to our ability to develop our workforce. We want to grow in a manner, but we want to grow, we want to grow in such a way that it's sustainable. And then really, any attempt to deliver, to successfully deliver parking or transportation services has to be built on the relationships that we have within the community. So, that rounds out our fourth area of focus. So, we'll look at each one of these in a little bit of a detail, again, to give council some context onto, into what we hope to accomplish and plan with the proposed budget. So, the first one here that we'll look at is our State of Good Repair. And just wanted to take a minute to recognize our employees that maintain our fleet and our facilities. We've done, and with our staff, we, in my opinion, we've done a remarkable job in being able to bring a lot of the repairs, particularly for our bus fleet in-house. We very rarely have to send anything off-site to have repaired anymore. And so, again, that speaks to, I think, the, the quality of our staff and the expertise of our mechanics. And keeping in mind, too, that most of these individuals work during the middle of the night in order to have buses ready to go by four and five o'clock in the morning. So, you guys are obviously welcome to come tour the facility at any time. But I will tell you, the maintenance facility during the day is, is a little empty, because everybody works in the middle of the night. So, looking at some specific items related to the State of Good Repair, I am pleased to report that the age of our fleet, our fixed route bus fleet average age is now six-point-six years. So, that means we have no buses that are operating past their useful life. And it's really a tremendous improvement from where we were just a few years ago. In fact, when I presented the budget in FY16, we were actually looking at eighteen buses, or thirty-one percent of our fleet that was past its useful life. And useful life on a heavy-duty transit bus is twelve years. And so, you can imagine the condition of a bus after twelve years, and then if you're running it past those twelve years, it's certainly not the best experience for the customer. And eventually, your maintenance costs start catching up with you. So, again, through some competitive grant programs, the support of the council, the support of the COPA Board of Trustees with our capital plan, we've really been able to make a dent in improving the condition of our fleet. Also want to mention shelters and stop improvements. And this is a, a big issue for us. It's a priority. We work on it to the extent that resources and, and staff expertise allow. Within this last fiscal year, we've actually improved thirty-eight different stop locations, and we've installed twenty-two new shelters. And when I say a stop improvement, that's basically a concrete pad, some type of connecting sidewalk, and in a lot of cases, maybe an ADA curb cut. And this is really an opportunity to, to thank the MAPS Office and Public Works for all they do to, to support our bus stop improvement program. As you know, MAPS has built a lot of sidewalks. Public Works, we coordinate with their project managers, and we work through these lists of, of shelter and bus stop improvement locations. And we just really couldn't, couldn't do it without them. In fact, we have, in addition to what you see on the slide, we have eighteen more locations in process for improvement, with another twenty-three shelters that we'll be installing. And so, that'll round out this current phase of, of bus stop improvements that we're working on. And then moving into next year, our plan is to be at least that aggressive or more in continuing to add shelters and improve stops. And then just quickly, I'll mention a signage project that we have on the off-street parking side of our operations. This is a rendering of what a public parking sign would look like attached to the Arch District Garage. It's the same type sign that we have currently attached to the Sheridan Walker Garage. And we're doing this for, mainly to create awareness of the amount of public parking that is in the downtown area. I'll speak later about a parking study that we have begun. And in talking with some of the stakeholders, as we started that parking study, you know, we shared this concept of, of publicizing the, the public parking, and we received a lot of support for that, because business owners still here, you know, when people come downtown, that, you know, folks don't think there's enough parking, or they don't know where to park. In a lot of cases, they may not know they can even park in one of our public parking garages. So, we really think this will help alleviate that myth that I think exists, that there's no parking downtown. So, on the next slide here, this is moving into our area of focus, Wellness or, or Workforce Development. And I love the picture here. This is three of our operations staff members, and two of those individuals just recently have been promoted to supervisor positions. So, in terms of developing our workforce, the young lady on the left there and the gentleman on the right are both now route supervisors, having started with us as bus operators. But our real focus this year with workforce development was hiring and retaining employees. With the addition of Sunday Bus Service, we had to, we had new additional bus operator positions to fill. We had some mechanic positions to fill. We had service worker positions to fill, because now that we're a seven-day operation, we actually had to add a shift, and we had to fill additional bus operator positions. So, in order to do that, we had to be pretty aggressive and pretty strategic on our hiring. Since December, we've actually hired thirty-eight new employees, and our current vacancy rate for bus operators is two-and-a-half percent. So, that's pretty remarkable for us in terms of, of, of being able to fill bus operator positions. And if everybody, if anybody's ever had to recruit operators or drivers, particularly ones with commercial driver's license, you'll know how, how hard that, you know, that segment of the workforce is to, to attract. One of the things I want to mention is an innovative approach we took this year to trying to fill, particularly those bus operator positions. And this was an idea that really originated within our Safety and Training Department, and that was providing free CDL classes to the community on Saturdays. So, what we would do is we would publicize through Michael and his team, social media, and, and some paid advertisements, that we're doing these free CDL classes. We would help an individual get their permit. So, that's preparing for the test, getting their permit, that's the first step in the CDL process. This was really beneficial twofold. It's one, it got people in the door where we could talk to them about our organization. And it also kind of helped us be able to prescreen some people right before they really got into the, the whole application and interview process. So, through those CDL classes, that was really a key in filling our positions. I'm looking at the next area of focus. This is our growth area of focus. And again, we can look at growth in a lot of different ways, all the way from service span to revenue miles. But we do like to focus on ridership. And so, we'll take a look at several different ridership slides. The first one here is our night bus service. And you can see, looking at the bar chart, this is our cumulative ridership for each one of the years. The line graph that you see is our riders per service hour. Recall, we started our night service in FY15 with two routes. We now have six routes in operation through FY19. We anticipate finishing the year with over a hundred thousand passenger trips on those six routes that are operating until midnight. The next slide here is our total weekday ridership. And we actually have this, the bar, the bar chart you see actually shows our average ridership per day. Even with the decline that you see in average ridership, we're still providing over ten thousand trips a day that has us on pace, even through the end of fiscal year nineteen, to finish around three million trips during the year. So, there's, so, again, looking at the downward trend, there's still a lot of people within our community that are using our bus service to get to where they need to go. The only thing I might share with you on this is, you know, FY16 was definitely our peak for riders, average riders per day. We've seen the decline even from FY18 to FY19, we're looking at about a three percent decline. This is This is consistent with what we're seeing across the country with bus ridership. There's lots of theories and opinions out there on why we're seeing that. But what we did is we went back and we looked and we compared to our peer cities to kind of get a sense of, well, what's the ridership doing there? When you look at our peer cities, the overall average decline is about 5.5%. So again, just to give you some context, we have tapered off a bit, but not to the extent that we're seeing in some of our peer cities. So our next slide is Sunday ridership, and we've only been in operation really three months unless you count that first Sunday in January. We're averaging over 2,500 passenger trips on a Sunday, which is exactly where, in our opinion, we should be. That's about half of our Sunday ridership. And there's been several, or a few consultants within the industry that, you know, have let us know that a good rule of thumb is about half the ridership, you'll see about half the ridership on Sunday that you'll experience on a Saturday. And so again, I think it just speaks to the fact that we put the new service out there, our community embraces it very quickly. You'll notice that spike in March, we actually had five Sundays in March. So it's really pretty consistent around 2,500 trips on a Sunday. And then looking at street car ridership, we talked a little bit about opening weekend. Get to the slide here. Okay, there we go, street car ridership. So we talked a little bit about opening weekend. We can also see that we had strong ridership, extremely strong ridership through the first two months of the service, December and January. So I won't go into all the numbers, but you can see there, the dark green is cumulative weekday ridership per month. The light green is our cumulative weekend, and then the orange is our total overall ridership for that month. December was our largest month, of course, with over 73,000 passenger trips, followed by just over 48,000 in January. And then we do see a dip in ridership in February. We have a few things going there. One is we started charging a fare in February. I think we'd all probably agree that kind of the newness of the service had wore off by the time February arrived. And then in addition, that was when the cold weather kind of hit. So we saw a drop in February, a really strong rebound in March percentage-wise, up to 33,000 trips. Spring break was a great week for us. We actually had one Saturday in March where we provided 3,900 passenger trips in one Saturday. And then April is looking to finish strong as well, nearly 30,000 trips. We did 60, over 6,800 trips just this last weekend of the Arts Festival and the Memorial Marathon. So Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, over 6,800 trips. We're very pleased with our ridership for April as well and anticipate that to be, you know, those numbers to be continued on hopefully throughout the summer as we have nice weather and additional events. So looking at some of our alternative transportation, I'll just mention quickly, you know, we do provide transit service along the Oklahoma River. Up in the top left, you can get a sense of what our ridership is there with the three 65-foot vessels that provide transit service from Meridian to Regatta Park and the Bricktown Landing. We're estimating FY19 to finish at over 13,000 trips, a little bit ahead of last year, but not quite during our, not quite where we were our record year in FY17 where we had over 16,000 trips. Looking at our Spokys Bike Share Ridership, again, FY19, we're expected to finish at just under 11,000 trips, down slightly from the previous year, and we attribute that decline mainly to the competition that we now have from the scooters that we see downtown. So looking forward to some growth items, we'll talk a little bit about our Bus Rapid Transit first. As you know, we were awarded a build grant in 2018. I am pleased to report that that project continues to progress. We have satisfied the first step of the environmental process and submitted our, basically our categorical exclusion documents to the FTA for review. We're in the process of selecting an engineering firm to help us with final design. And then again, as we continue with the project, construction will begin in '21 with service anticipated for 2023. And again, that's a coordinated effort between not only us, but the Planning Department and Public Works as well in trying to bring that service online. Included in the proposed budget is additional funding for holiday bus service. There's six holidays that with the approval of the budget, we'll now be able to provide bus service. The bus service that we're going to offer on holidays is going to be the equivalent of the frequency and service span that we now offer on Saturdays. And so we'll now have buses operating on New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas. And I think this really just goes to support council's priority to develop a transportation system that works for all residents because we know that a lot of our customers, they rely on public transportation to get to where they need to go. They have activities and events they want to attend on the holidays, not to mention the fact that a lot of our customer base, they have, you know, they have to work on the holidays. So we want to be able to make sure we have that transportation to get them there. So talking a little bit about parking, I mentioned a downtown parking study. We have engaged Kimley-Horn and Associates to help us with a parking study of the central city area. The boundaries of the parking study are basically Classon on the west, I-235 on the east, so it will include Bricktown. The northern boundary is 13th and then all the way south to the Oklahoma City Boulevard. Again, although, you know, we're more or less kind of taking the lead on the project, we are coordinating and within our team, we have planning, the Alliance for Economic Development, and the city manager's office all contributing to this study. So what the consultant is really going to do is do an inventory of the parking system downtown, both public and private, help us get a sense of where parking, if any additional parking needs to go, help us get some recommendations on our on-street parking management process. And so we're working through that process right now. We plan to have some preliminary recommendations towards the end of the summer. And really, this will kind of be the framework or the map that we use in making parking decisions moving forward, just like we use the Court of Shore Parking Study to help us determine the size of the Convention Center parking garage. And speaking of the Convention Center parking garage, here's a quick timeline of where we're at with that. We are in the process of completing the design. As you know, the garage is being located on a site that was owned by OG&E, so we expect the demo and the cleanup of that site to be complete in June. We'll be bidding the project and beginning construction this fall with completion estimated to be around the same time as the Convention Center wraps up its construction. So our last area of focus here is relationships, and I can't emphasize again how important it is to engage our community, and we have a great team of staff that does that. Here's a great picture of some Embarc staff at probably an Open Streets event. We're looking forward to the One OKC event coming up, I believe, on May 18th. We'll be participating in that. And so we did have lots of opportunities to listen to the community, particularly with the launch of the Street Car Service. You know, we participated in a lot of the, what we call the track meet events. We took the street car vehicles, introduced them to the community through events like the Brick or Treat, the Midtown Walkabout, the Lights on Broadway. We had some more formalized listening sessions, whether it be the BRT public meeting or some of the engagement we did with the ADA community on familiarizing them with the street car. We also had opportunities to engage the community. We, again, were a regular participant in Open Streets. We continue the Love the Loops campaign for businesses along the Oklahoma City street car route. That's where businesses can sign up free to become part of the Love the Loops Partner Program. And then we do some cooperative, you know, publicity there promoting both the street car and the businesses and the neighborhoods. And then, of course, we've mentioned the Sunday service and street car launch. We had some partnering opportunities this year, as we always do, but I wanted to mention a few of them. We're very pleased with, you know, our work with the Homeless Alliance and ability to serve that facility better by rerouting one of our bus routes. The Curbside Chronicle played an important role in the launch of the street car. The COPPA Board of Trustees has provided some additional bus passes to the OKC Drug Corp. program to help those individuals that need transportation be able to complete that program in a more timely manner. The Hall Pass program, we haven't talked about that in a while, but that is the free bus pass for any student that is enrolled in an Oklahoma City public school, high school. We continue to see some pretty good usage of the Hall Pass program. Through this year, we've actually provided over 30,000 trips for high school students. Last year, we were at about 34,000, so we're on pace to see that, see about those numbers again this year by the time it's wrapped up. And then Road Scholars, this is our field trip program. Again, free public transportation for particularly school groups but other nonprofits. We've actually provided 25 Road Scholar trips this year, 475 participants in those programs. We have another 12 that are scheduled through the end of the year, and that number will probably grow. And then we've also partnered this year, providing additional bus passes to the United Way for some of the agencies that they work with. Okay, so as we wrap up and look at our budget, we certainly love the Budget Book cover this year. We think that's probably the best Budget Book cover we've seen. But looking at our overall COPPA budget, I want to just make a note here, when you're looking in your budget document, and you can find our budget again on page C, 145 of the Budget Book, when you look at that budget document, what you're going to see is the city's portion of funding that supports public transportation. But as you know, the public transportation is really overseen by the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority, so the city funding along with some federal funding, state funding, that all goes, you know, into one budget to support the total amount of services. So what I have here that I'm showing you is the total budget for all parking and transportation services for our community. And this is the COPPA proposed budget, $42,716,552. So you can look at the pie chart here and you can see clearly that most of that funding goes to the providing bus transit service. That's 71% of our budget or over $30 million. Our parking budget is 14% of our overall combined budget at just under $6 million. And keep in mind, too, that with our off-street parking program, there is no general fund money, there is no tax dollars that go into supporting the municipal parking garages. Folks that, customers, I should say, that use our service, whether they're monthly contract parkers or event parkers, that revenue is what pays for the expenses of the system. Our street car makes up 12% of our budget or just over $5 million. Our ferry service that I mentioned earlier is just under $1 million at 2% of our budget, and then our bike share is $1 at $226,000. So that's our combined budget for expenses. And then we have various funding sources that support both the transit operations and then funding sources that support parking operations. So the funding sources that support parking are here on this graph, and you can see that most of our revenue comes from that monthly contract parker, 46% or just about $2.7 million come from those people that park in our garages day in and day out, have a monthly parking contract. Event parking is just over $2 million. That makes up 34% of our funding sources. Our daily or transient revenue is about 13% of our revenue, just over $700,000. And then we do have other revenues, around $400,000, that go to support the parking system. And then when we look at funding sources for transit, again, our total transit budget is just over $36 million with $23 million or 63% of that budget being supported by the city, by the city's general fund. And so that's what you should see in your budget document. We do have federal funding that supports transit in Oklahoma City. We have right around $7.7 million or 21% of our revenue comes from federal grants. Fare revenue makes up $3.2 million or right around 9% of our overall funding sources. State revenue, which has been flat for as long as I can remember, at just about $1 million, makes up 3% of our budget. And then we have other revenue sources of about $1.7 million or 4% of our budget. So that's how the transportation budget is supported within our community. So as far as major changes go, and this is the last slide I have for you this morning, but we'll finish with our major changes. We've already mentioned holiday bus service. That was an addition of 184,000. Sunday street car service, it's really a continuation of the level of service that we're providing now, but we'll continue that throughout the next fiscal year. That was an addition of 215,000. And then one of the things we didn't really talk about, but I can just mention briefly, is we really retooled our safety and training department. We've added a chief safety officer as well as some support staff for our safety and training department. And this is going to have us positioned to meet some new, or should say, some coming FTA requirements in terms of implementing safety management systems, developing a public transportation agency safety plan. And one of the things that has impacted us is because we operate a rail system or a fixed guideway system, that puts us in a category with the FTA that's consistent with a lot of the larger transit agencies. So obviously, you heard in our mission statement, we want to provide safe service. We have new set of guidelines related to safety, and so now we're more than prepared to meet those in the coming years. As with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Jason, thank you for your presentation. Seeing no questions, I'll go.
I do have some questions. Thank you so much for this. This was really helpful. I had a few questions, just sort of, I guess, kind of technical questions about some of the numbers. So there was a slide with your customer survey from February of this year. Is that just bus or are you doing that survey on street car, ferry service? Or is that just the bus?
So this is just bus. We did do one for street car, but don't have that included.
And then on the street car, looking at ridership, I'm curious how that ridership is measured? Because I know, like, I get on the bus and, like, show my pass or put my pass in the fare box and the operator pushes a button, and I assume that's getting tallied up somehow. But I was curious, because when I've been on the street car, I'm just, walk on, and I've never had anyone check my pass. So I'm just curious how that ridership gets measured.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. We measure ridership consistent with how ridership is measured within the industry, and that is by using automated passenger counters. So there are basically sensors above the doors that can detect when people board in the light. So the other thing I mentioned about that is part of our systems-integrated testing, of course, is testing the accuracy of those automated passenger counters. And ultimately, we'll use that ridership to report to NTD, the National Transit Database, which eventually will impact grant funding. So great question. Thank you for asking that.
Yeah, that's super helpful. And then, yeah, I just wanted to say I really appreciate all of the work that Embarc has done to invest in our bus service, particularly seeing that the Sunday service ridership is like, oh, I can go places on Sundays now. And lots of other people, like you said, with holiday service, I think will be huge for people accessing employment and having that reliable source of transit. So thank you.
And then I just want to echo Councilwoman Hammond. And then just looking at this photo I took of the data you provided, just want to make sure I am understanding this correctly, that when we did a citizen's survey, asking what improvement the residents would like to see to our transit system, they said more frequent service on weekends, weekdays, and running later. I am reading that correctly.
That is from our customer survey, so that's when we...
The people who are using it right now...
That's right.
Do we talk to, I know we do, because I serve on COPPA, I'm curious, the choice riders, the people out and about who own a car and have a choice whether to take public transportation, what do they say would make them ride this system?
Well, we engage the non-riders in a couple of different ways. One is we have a few questions within the general resident survey that the city does each and every year. And then every other year, we do our own non-rider survey. We ask several questions about their inclinations to use the system and what would make the system more attractive to them. I can't recall all the questions, but we do ask them about, for example, you know, the availability of covered stops, the frequency of the bus, you know, things like that. And then, so then they will respond, you know, yes, this particular factor would or would not, you know, make me more inclined to ride the bus. And typically, what we find is, you know, I mean, it's kind of consistent with what we see from our own customers. I mean, people want, you know, safe, protected places to wait, to catch the bus, and then generally, frequency is, I mean, that's the top.
And just in case someone's tuning into Channel 20 for the first time, when you say frequency, would you say what that means and where we are right now weekday versus weekend and what the industry standard is for frequency?
Well, yeah, so frequency is basically how often a bus comes by, you know, your stop. So, you know, right now, we're at about 30-minute frequency on almost all routes, and thanks to the council and the COPPA Board of Trustees, we've worked really hard to get to that level of frequency. In some more robust transit systems, you'll see frequency in the neighborhood of 15 minutes. In some more robust transit systems, you'll see frequency in the neighborhood of 15 minutes. I mean, obviously, the more frequent it becomes, the more convenient it is, the more predictable it is, right? I mean, you don't have to worry about a schedule. It's just like the street car, if you know a bus is coming by every 15 minutes or every 20 or whatever the number is. So...
And then I just want to, again, applaud Embark and the council members who've come before me who invested in Sunday bus service and improving the frequency over the years. You all are doing a lot of wonderful work.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Yes, sir.
Seeing no more further questions on this, let's move on to the fire department. Chief Kelly.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. Thank you for the opportunity today to review the proposed FY '20 Fire Department budget. Before I get started, I would like to introduce my command staff. They're definitely very supportive of me and are very instrumental in making us be successful in taking care of our residents. I'd like to first introduce Chief Harold Thompson. He is our Fire Marshal. Deputy Chief Harold Thompson, he's our Fire Marshal. Deputy Chief Mike Walker, he's our Operations Chief. Deputy Chief Tony Davis, who is unable to be here, he's our Support Services Chief. And then Clint Regir is our Business Manager. So we have a great team that work together very cohesively to support and make sure we protect our citizens. If you want to follow along, on page C-53 in the Budget Book, you'll be able to find the Fire Department budget. The Fire Department mission is, the mission of the Fire Department is to provide emergency service response, fire prevention, public education services to the Oklahoma City community so they can have their lives and property protected. Our overall mission is to respond quickly, safely, courteously, meet the need. And that's our focus every day, to meet the needs of our residents. And we feel that our people that are out there doing that every day, they provide that service very effectively. Before we get into the budget, I would like to just do a quick overview of what the Fire Department actually looks like, so you can kind of get an idea when we talk about the budget and where we're going and what it looks like and how we actually divide these services up. Our budget for this year FY '20 proposed is for 1,034 positions. Of those, 999 of those are uniform positions, 35 are civilian positions, and that will be operating out of 36 fire stations with six districts. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. We have two fire stations that are currently, one's under construction and one's about to begin construction. Just an overview of our responses, last year, we responded to 74,214 incidents. 2,877 of those were fire responses. Now, fire responses may be a structure fire, car fire, grass fire, trash fire, any type of fire response. As you can see, the majority of our calls are emergency medical responses. 49,962 of those were medical responses. And then 21,375 were others, and that would be automatic alarms, where we have an alarm that goes off at a structure, car wrecks, elevator rescues, any type of rescue that we respond to other than fire or EMS. To give you an overview of the department, we're predominantly male. We have 953 males and 21 females, and that's one area that we have instituted where we have some recruitment officers, where we focus on that area and try to bring diversity in the department. So that's one area that we're really focusing on. We have 168 minorities. And just to give you an overview, that, again, is that's something that's very important for us. We want to reflect the community, and that's some areas that we're really focusing on and making sure that we're reaching out in those areas. If you break down of our department, you can see we have 105 employees with 25-plus years of service. And the reason I tell you, that's a big milestone for us, when they reach 25 years of service plus their age, that's usually an area they start looking at retirement. So we want to make sure we're ahead of the curve. So that's areas that we look at and we pay attention to, so we can make sure that we're ready and have a class prepared to go and for hiring. We have 332 employees in their 40s. That's also very important, because usually as we get over the age 50 mark is when we start seeing, coupled with their years of service, when we start seeing people start to transition out of the Fire Department. And then we have 178 employees that are also in their 50s. Just to give you a overview, our average age of years on the department is 40.82, and our average years of service is 13.26 years of service. I want to give you a full overview of the department and what it looks like serving the community. You can see here a map of the city, the 620 square miles that we do service. There are, if you'll note on here, there are 38 stations. You'll see in the lower right-hand corner, in Councilman Stone's area of service in Ward Four is Station 29. That is under construction and is slated to be opened this summer in 2019. And then on the west side, Councilman McAtee's area in Ward Three is Station 38. That's on 59th and Richland. And I'll talk more about that in our presentation here, but those are two stations. Once we get those stations open, we'll be at 38 stations. We currently serve the community right now with 39 engine companies, 13 ladder companies, 17 brush pumpers, six battalion chiefs, and that's over the six districts that I talked about earlier, six heavy tankers. And those heavy tankers actually carry 3,000 gallons of water, because there is a large portion of the city that is unhydrant, that we do not have hydrants in. So we provide that water so we can provide an effective firefighting service to the community. We have four light rescues, one hazmat unit, one heavy rescue, and one water rescue. So you can have an overview now. We want to get into the major budget changes that we have for the Fire Department this year. The $4.8 million are just changes, a roll-up in personnel-related costs and collective bargaining through the salaries, merit, retirement, insurance, and other benefits. We're also looking to add two new fire inspection and code compliance officers this year. And our focus in that is we want to look at our high-risk commercial business inspections. And that's areas that we look at and we see where we have a potential for a large loss of life. So that's anywhere where we have large gatherings, and we want to make sure that we're addressing those areas to make sure when our residents are shopping or are doing things in our community, that they're safe. And the areas that we're looking at for our high-risk commercial businesses that we look at are apartments, hotels, motels, educational facilities, daycares, hospitals, grower-producer facilities, restaurants, and bars. So those two code enforcement, compliance officers will help us and make sure that we get out and we're inspecting those high-risk commercial businesses. We're also adding a major in our dispatch, and that will be a dispatch liaison that actually works at the Public Safety Communication Building and 911. And their focus is to make sure our dispatchers are trained, to make sure that we have a good relationship with the public safety officers that are working in the 911 center to make sure that we have other things available to us when we have large catastrophic events that take place within the city where we can do things to manage those incidents. So they're very effective, it's going to be a very effective position in what we're trying to do going forward. You can also see here that we have $2 million that is additional from the fire sales tax fund to cover our personal protective equipment program. That's our PPE program. That's our bunker gear that our firefighters wear to protect themselves when they're doing their job. And the reason we're doing that, we have about 500 sets of gear that is actually going out of date. NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Association, actually has pro-qual standards that they set. And basically, those standards state that the gear should be good for 10 years from the date it's put in service. We have about 500 sets of gear that's coming on that 10-year mark, and we want to make sure that our firefighters are in the very best gear, up to date, and safe. And so we're replacing about 500 sets. So that's part of that $2 million. And we're also focusing very much on the contamination reduction, and that's to cancer-causing agents. So one of the areas we're also looking at is what we call dual-certified gear. And that's an extra set of gear that they could wear. It's a lighter weight gear that they, basically, we have them right now. It's for wildland. But the new gear we're looking at is a little bit, it's a more, technology has increased the safety in that gear. So it's a two-piece garment that we're going to, that they can wear not only for wildland but for vehicle extrication, car wrecks, other types of incidents besides a structure fire. And what that allows them to do is not have to put their structural gear on, so that way we're reducing their contamination, the potential to be exposed to carcinogens. So that's the other area that we're using that $2 million for. We're also adding a System Support Specialist 2, and that is our Fire Information Technology area. We all know that we're having increased demands on IT and technology-based services, and that's something in the fire service we're also challenged with. We want to stay ahead of the curve and not play catch-up, so we're adding a System Support Specialist 2. That will give us four Fire Information Technology personnel to be able to address the needs within the Fire Department. We also have $300,000 that we're increasing our Fire Information Technology budget, and that's so we can look at technology pieces within the department or anything outside services, so we can improve the technology within the Fire Department. Here is the overview of the budget. You can see the full expenditures and positions by the fund. Our general fund is the majority of our budget. You can see it's 58%. And our total budget is $164,431,595. And when you break that down in the general fund, you can see the $94 million in the general fund, which is 58% of the budget. And then our three-quarter cent dedicated sales tax is the $48.8 million, which accounts for 208 positions. And then the MAPS III Use Tax Fund, which we use to replace apparatus, our apparatus replacement is $8.13 million, and that is at 5% of the budget. And that go back, the sales tax is 30% of that budget as well. I'm sorry, I didn't say that earlier. And then we have our Better Streets, Safer City Use Tax Fund that is also to replace vehicle apparatus. And you can see that is 7% of the budget, that's at $11 million. And then we have a Grants Management Fund for our safer grant that we utilize to hire 39 firefighters from the federal government. It's a fund that pays a portion of their salaries, and that is 1% of our budget there, and that's 18 positions at $1.6 million. This is, sometimes it's very hard to see this, but this is an overview, gives you a good view of the department's organizational chart, and you can see from the top to bottom of what we look like organizationally. Again, as we said earlier, we have 999 uniform positions, 35 civilian positions for a total of 1,340, 1,034 positions. You can see that underneath the fire chief there, we have a business manager, administrative assistant, and we also have two people that are focused primarily on safety of our firefighters. We have a safety officer, a dedicated person to that. And then we have a public relations and marketing, basically known in the past of a PIO, to inform the public of what's going on, to also sell the brand of the Fire Department so we can educate what we do as a Fire Department, how we provide service to our citizens, and how we keep them abreast on what we're doing for them every day. And then it's broken down into three divisions, the Fire Prevention Division that has three work sections underneath that, and that is fire investigations, our education, and also our fire code compliance. And in the middle, you have the Support Services Division. That's anything that supports the Fire Department. That'd be our human resource staff, our dispatchers, our maintenance division, our facilities division, our HR and Fire Information Technology. And then to the right, you have our operational staff, and that's our operations. That's the boots on the ground at the fire station you see every day that provides the services to the citizens. I'm going to review our issues and strategic goals this, on the Fire Department. We have three that we're going to discuss today. The first one we'll look at is the lack of awareness and application of personal safety and health measures by residents will result in fire fatalities, injuries, and property loss. In order to address that, we have two main key results we're looking at. And the first one is 100% of our elementary schools in Oklahoma City Limits will receive fire and life safety presentations each year. Previously, we only focused on the second graders. We felt that if we could get out to all the second graders, we could get that culture developed young, but we, within our community, but we realized we need to expand that. So what we're now focusing on is the full elementary K through sixth grade. So we're working with UCO and other agencies within the city, and we've created what we call OK Child. And that is actually a curriculum that they can utilize, the teachers can actually utilize to teach not only fire safety, but any type of injury prevention to our kids within the Oklahoma City Limits schools. It's not just Oklahoma City, it's any schools within Oklahoma City Limits. And so we're really broadening our approach to that. We feel that it's more important to create a culture of that every year, because it's surprising how often it is, it's the children that are teaching the adults about fire safety. So we really believe that's an important focus for us of partnering, again, with UCO to create that curriculum of OK Child that can be utilized. And the great thing about it, it's not only can be utilized in Oklahoma City, it can be utilized statewide, because they can get on, download it, utilize it. So we're really excited about that. And then the other part of is 40,000 community risk reduction activities involving the community of Oklahoma City. That's our focus. Anytime a fire truck or fire personnel are out making contact with our citizens, our residents, our focus is we want to relay a fire safety message. So that, we track those, we have a database that we put those in. And that would be anything of talking to them about calling 911, making sure they have a working smoke alarm, talking to them about exit drills in the home, anything that you can think, stop, drop, and roll, we track those, because we want to focus on fire prevention and injury prevention, and that's the ways that we focus every day. The result that we look at, and this is the things that we've been struggling with the last couple of years, you can see the ebb and flow throughout the years of, and this is the annual fire fatality rate in Oklahoma City. And the goal of that is it will be below the national average. The national average is actually 1.05 for 100,000 population. As you can see, this year, we're actually at 1.97, so we're above the national average. So we're continually looking at ways that we can deal with that measure to bring that down. And I'm going to talk about some of those in different areas. But if you look at, I'm going to focus on the last two years, in 2018, we had 21 fatalities. And in 2019, we're currently at 13. The primary focus that we have in those areas is a working smoke alarm. Both years that we've looked at, every structure fire fatality that we've had except one, both years, is because they did not have a working smoke alarm. So those are areas that we continually address, and we're going to stay after that until we eradicate this. So it's one of those areas we have to focus and continually focus in those areas. Another thing that we did notice this year that we ran into is exit drills in the home. Some of the things that we ran into is actually six of our fatalities this year, they were actually notified and had some type of early warning, but they were unable to get out of their house. And we're creatures of habit. What we find many times, if they can't go out the front door, if they don't have a plan, then they can panic or have other issues. So we always focus on exit drills of the home, of having a secondary means of egress. So that's some of the areas we're also focusing on with that smoke alarm. The other issue we have is the growing demand on Fire Department services and resources caused by our population growth. And that is we're seeing this population growth, we have to stay ahead of that curve and make sure that we're providing the best service we can to our residents. So we're looking at that population growth development and changing demographics, coupled with an increasing role in EMS delivery. If not addressed, if we don't stay on top of this, it could increase response times leading to property loss when we have structure fires, deterioration of patient conditions when we have an emergency medical call, or increasing delays in delivering of other services. So we want to continually to focus on those areas. And our goal in that is annually, the residents of Oklahoma City, even anticipating these gross, growth in outlying areas, will receive emergency response within seven minutes or less 70% of the time. So that is our goal in that. As you can see, here is our response. We've tracked for FY '13 through FY '19, and you can see there has been an increase in that. We're continually striving for that 70% goal. Over the last, since FY '16, we have seen a jump from FY '15 to '16 of about 5%. We stayed there pretty consistently. And what we did that year when we seen that growth in that response was, we started focusing on getting out of the fire station in an effective manner. Our goal was one minute or less 90% of the time, and we meet that. We continually meet that goal and we stay on top of that goal. We also make sure that our dispatchers can adequately respond and get a, the companies responding within one minute or less 60%, 90% of the time. So those two areas we really focus on, because everything else is travel time. And some of those you can't control because of traffic and other areas, so we have to focus on that. Now, we are building the two new fire stations to the 2007 GEO Bonds, the 29 and 38, so that will help in some areas. But we're seeing the majority of our responses are in the core of the city. So we still have to focus on, you know, making sure that we have traffic, ways that we can improve that, and look at all other areas that we can improve that response within the city. The third issue I'm going to talk about is the lack of capital funding for Fire Department facilities and fleet replacement. We're very grateful in what we have currently, where we actually have the use tax... We're very grateful in what we have currently, where we actually have the use tax fund that we replace all of our apparatus. You can go to any fire department in the nation, I guarantee you, we have the best apparatus of anybody that you'll look at. And we're very pleased with that, and we're very appreciative of what the council supports that. But the thing that we want to look at is for long-term sustainment in this. So we continually keep this as an issue because in 2021, when the Better Streets, Safer City, the funds, the use funds, use tax funds go away, we won't have a continued stream of funding for that. So we want to make sure that we have this on the forefront, that we continue to look at that process. And we're going to do everything we can within the department to make sure we're addressing those areas. We actually fund and make sure that we address all of our general obligation requirements to, for the fire stations and making sure that we stay on top of them, because that's one area that we don't have a funding source is for our fire station facilities. So we want to make sure that we stay on top of that. And we're going to continue to work with city leadership to identify funding streams for that, to try to identify a continued funding stream by 2021. This is just an overview. You see what we're working with and what we're maintaining. We have 44 facilities to maintain currently. When we build, when we complete the two new fire stations, that will go to 46 facilities that we have to maintain. We also have 94 frontline fire apparatus that we place, that we have to maintain, 31 reserve apparatus, and 118 support units. We do allocate funding for that every year. We have $475,000 in the general fund for our facility needs to take care of repairs and maintenance around the fire facilities. And then we also have $1 million that's allocated in sales tax for facility needs to also address any other areas. And then we have $2 million that we put in there for our building of new fire facilities that we can utilize for our new fire stations, our large remodels that we do in a fire station. So we are doing everything we can within our budget to do that, to make sure we maintain our facilities. Our Fire Prevention Services is, again, was under the direction of Deputy Chief Harold Thompson. The purpose of the Fire Prevention Services is to provide education, enforcement, investigation services to the residents, business community, and visitors of Oklahoma City so they can benefit from a reduced risk of loss of life from fire and other hazards. So this is our proactive phase at the fire department. We want to make sure that we can eliminate our hazards before they become some type of an event, so that we want to focus in those areas. When you look at the positions we have under fire investigations, we have 14 positions, and we have fire prevention, inspection, and code compliance, we have 19 positions. And then our public safety education services, we have 10. So you see a total of 44 positions there at $6.3 million in the budget for, under the Fire Prevention Services. We look at our performance measurement, and this is one that I'm very proud of. It's an unfortunate event that we've seen the repercussion of the fires within the city and the large loss of life that we talked about earlier. But identifying our issues, we've really focused in this area, and you can see this. And you look at, this is our smoke alarm installation, and you can look from 2008 all the way up to 2018. And it's pretty obvious, you can see what took place in 2018. We went from 3,600 in 2017 smoke alarm installations to 13,566 in 2018. I'm sorry, 2017, 3,600, and 2018, 13,000. And that was just us maintaining a focus in that area, us as the fire department maintaining a focus in that area. We actually put them up free to any resident within the city. They have, if they own their home, we put them up free. And we also establish some simple ways for them to contact us. We have a one-call number, 316-BEEP, that they call. It's in English or Spanish, and within 24 hours, we'll put a working smoke alarm up. And we don't just put a working smoke alarm up, we put it up to code. So that means they get one outside of their bedroom and one in every bedroom in the house. So we want to make sure that we focus in that area, and we also put it online. It's online in English and Spanish. Same for that, we have a 24-hour turnaround in that. So that is a primary focus to address our issue that we're seeing in those loss, large loss of lives. Another areas that we look at in our Fire Prevention Services is our performance is our percentage of fire protection system plan reviews completed within seven business days of request. And we're at 99% right now. Our goal is 100. In seven days, we want to be able to get that done, and we're at 99%. We're going to continue and strive until we reach that 100% goal. And then our percentage of initial new construction inspections completed within two business days of requests. We're currently at 96%, and our goal is 90, and we still want to focus on that one and move it to 100%. You can see there, our percentage of high-risk commercial businesses inspected annually, it's a new measure, so we don't have any results of that. We're still working on that, and that's, again, what one of those, those two in code, in fire code and compliance officers that we're adding to the budget will help assist in that area. This is something we added to our LFR measures. We believe that much in it. We believe we need to address our high-risk commercial businesses to assure that our residents, when they're out in the community, they can go into these businesses and they will be safe. And we want to make sure that we assure that they have that from the fire department as we check those out. And then we have our percentage of cases referred to district attorney for prosecution of arson. So we're currently at 12%. Our goal was 35%. So we have some areas that we want to continue to focus on that. There's a lot of different things that go into that. We have to look, make sure we have witnesses, we have to have the evidence there, so we continually strive to improve that measure, and we're going to continually do that. This is our Fire Operations Services under Deputy Chief Mike Walker, and the purpose of the Operational Services is to provide emergency response and non-emergency responses to all residents and visitors in our community so they can have their lives and property protected from fires, emergency medicals, and other hazards. As you can see, we have 635 positions under the Emergency Medical Services at $84.9 million in the budget. And then our Fire Suppression Operations at 285 positions at $38.2 million in the budget for a total budget of the Operations Division of $123 million. And just to let you know, we don't have a division of firefighters that only does EMS or fire suppression. They collectively all do that work. We just separate that based on the allocation on what they, on our responses. We look at our programs, positions, and budget in that. The percentage of fire incident responses in five minutes or less, our goal is 70%. We're currently at 61%. And then our percentage of EMS incident responses in five minutes or less is at 61%. A goal there is also at 70. If you'll notice, there was two different numbers. Earlier, I talked about 70%, seven minutes or less 70% of the time, and this is five minutes. The only difference is the five-minute response is actually when we receive the call at the fire station till they arrive on scene. The full seven minutes is when you actually add the dispatch when we receive the 911 call. So this right here is just tracking from the time we get the call at the fire station till we get on scene. So that's the difference in those two measures when you see that. And then our goal is the percentage of, to make sure that we protect our occupants and businesses and residents, our percentage of structure fires contained to the room of origin, that's getting there quickly, putting the fire out, and making sure it doesn't spread. Our goal was 65%. We're currently at 69%. So that may be something we see that we try to move up a little bit in the LFR when we evaluate that going forward. And then the percentage of fire department emergency responses provided with advanced life support. 32 of our current engine companies are advanced life support. Our goal is to move where all of our engines are advanced life support. So you can see currently we're at 87% where it's provided advanced life support. Our goal is 85. As we add those advanced life support engines, we'll increase that goal. It'll be very difficult to be 100% just because if an ALS engine company is out of service, they may get a BLS ladder or a different unit in that area to get a quicker response. And then we have our Fire Support Services under Deputy Chief Tony Davis, and the purpose of the Fire Support, of the Support Services is to provide dispatch, fleet, equipment, and facility management services to the fire department so they can receive timely dispatches and properly maintain fleet, equipment, and facilities. And under that, you'll see the Fire Department Dispatch is 16 positions at 2.2 million in the budget, and the Fire Maintenance Services is 17 positions at 12.4 million in the budget for a total of $14.6 million with 33 positions. Our performance measurement that we look at there, as I talked about earlier, is our percentage of fire caretaker incidents dispatched within one minute. Our goal of that is 90%. We're at 87%. We've seen marked increases in that over the last three years. We actually look at every individual dispatcher, and we look at their times, so we try to find ways to improve that, want to work with them in a positive way to reinforce what they're doing well, but also find ways that they can improve that. So we're focused on that area. And then we look at the percentage of 911 telephone calls answered in 15 seconds or less. We're at 97%. Our goal is 90%. And then on the maintenance side, we look at our percentage of total maintenance hours that are scheduled. We're currently at 94%. Our goal was 60. That tells us we have a well-maintained fleet, that we don't have a lot of services that just drop on us, apparatus that go out of service. They're all scheduled, so that's very, we're very fortunate in that area. And then we look at our percentage of out, repairs that are outsourced. We're at 4%. Our goal is to be 15% or less, so we're staying in a good area on that. So we want to make sure that we are able to do those services inside. The fire department saves money in our budget. Just want to show you, the fire station's under construction, that new Station 29, it's located at 8400 Southeast 164th. This was funded through the 2000 general obligation bond program. We should be completing this project in the summer, and then we'll open that up for business. We'll actually have an engine company and a brush pumper there, so we're real excited about that. I know Councilman Stone is right down the road from his house, so we're looking forward to that. You can see the progress we're doing here. We're really excited about these projects because we've already opened two fire stations that are identical in the architectural design. At Station 21, which is off of Southwest 29th and I-44, and Station 23, which is off 29th and Eastern, it was, be identical in design, and I think we got a lot of bang for our buck in that when we actually utilized the same architectural design and drawn that up. And you can see, the next one is the architectural rendition of Station 29 completed. So we're really excited about that, and appreciate the support in that. That is the Fire Department FY '20 budget, proposed budget. Is there, I'll entertain any questions?
Any questions for the chief?
Vice Mayor, just a comment. Chief, you gave us a lot of great information, and I know your staff do a tremendous job, but one that really stuck out to me is there's only one minute in between the time you get a call and your vehicle leaves the facility.
Yes, sir.
That's really remarkable. So I congratulate you and your staff for accomplishing that. That's, it's hard to believe, really, that you can get your vehicle moving that quickly.
Just always remember that if you're visiting a fire station, the lights go off and they run away from you. They're not being rude. That's what we expect, so.
We may take our household by one of those stations, one of those days, to see how we can improve our time to get out of the house to our vehicle. It seems like...
I tell you, the way we did that, we actually, when we first started looking at the measure, we actually just asked everyone, "How do you think you're doing?" And of course, everyone feels, I'm sure your family feels the same way, they're doing a good job at it. But when we actually started putting the numbers in front of them, looking at the data, we could actually see where it's at, and they actually report that every month on their monthly goals. So they actually see that, how they're doing, and you can compare that. So it's a little friendly competition there. I don't know if you can get with the Joneses and see how fast they get out. It might help you out, sir.
We'll try that. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Chief, just one comment.
Okay.
That's all right. I just wanted to say thank you for you and your staff on all of those smoke alarms getting installed. I mean, that's a huge undertaking, and that's, that's just got to be, you know, a ton of lives saved that we'll never hear about other than, hey, there, here's their melted smoke alarm, right? But just great work in that area, and I hope you guys can continue that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I wanted to say something as well to mimic that, just to be intentional when you have a fatality, to go into the neighborhood and knock on the doors to make sure it doesn't happen again in that neighborhood. It definitely means something, and it also means community at the end of the day. And I also want to thank you all for being intentional about making sure you have diversity within the department and just being in the community. It means a lot for a lot of folks to see you guys and to know that you are a safe place if needed, and we can just come and be a part. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, on our official agenda, we're supposed to have items from council right now. We've had an opportunity to share, but let's go around here if you have anything. Don't see any. Okay.
I got something. I'm sorry if I got something. I wanted to talk about, I know we were talking about some things that were happening earlier in the beginning about our budget overview and economic outlook update, so I wanted to mention I was looking at the possibility and opportunity for the chief diversity officer, and I just, I hope we are being very intentional in that. And the reason I say that is because if we are being as intentional with our boards, trusts, and commissions, it also starts within the realm of the city employees as well. And with us losing our only African-American assistant city manager, I hope we are being very intentional again in making sure we have more diversity within that upper management system in order for those to be self-promoted into those opportunities that are within the city of Oklahoma City.
It's definitely something that's very important to us and something we're going to be focused on.
Next up was city manager reports. Any reports, sir?
I don't have any reports. I did want to clarify one thing, that on May 28, it was just an oversight on our part. We have utilities, parks, and recreation, airports, and we will have the planning department presenting on that date as well. So planning will be on May 28 also.
Thank you, sir. Then no citizen, we have no sign-up sheets here. Any citizen wishing to be heard? Seeing none, that concludes our agenda. We are adjourned.